The time is 8:30. I'm going to call to order committee number four, Law Enforcement, Corrections and Courts. If we could read our first item, please.
Good morning. The first item is a discussion item to last approximately 15 minutes. State of Tennessee Comptroller's Office Report on the Shelby County Justice System.
And we have some guests here from the Tennessee Comptroller's Office, and if you would come on up and sit here at the presenter's table, we'd love to hear what you have to say this morning. And if you would, there's a button there that looks like a person. If you would hit that when it's your turn to speak, and if you would just start with your name and title. We know where you're from, so maybe just name and title, and then the floor will be yours.
Good morning. Is that okay? All right. Good morning. Thank you for having us. My name's Lauren Huddleston. I'm the Principal Research Advisor in the Office of Research and Education Accountability as part of the Comptroller's Office. We primarily conduct research as requested by the Tennessee General Assembly, and we're very excited to be here today to share some of our findings from our most recent report. On our slides, there we go. You'll also be hearing from Erin Brown and David Melendez this morning as we go through this presentation. So on the next slide, there we go. We were given a task from the Lieutenant Governor. Lieutenant Governor McNally sent a request letter to our office to investigate four primary concerns related to the Shelby County criminal justice system. So this is the focus of our report. The first is the length of time it takes to dispose cases within Shelby County. The second is the number of career criminals committing additional crimes while awaiting case disposition. The third is the apparent discrepancy between charges at arrest and the charges for which defendants are ultimately prosecuted. And finally, the last concern was the final disposition of cases as compared to proportional judgment and an overall deterrent to crime. So we're going to share some brief highlights from our report this morning, starting with Erin.
Hi, I'm Erin Brown from the Comptroller's Office. We requested a lot of data to try and address these four questions that were laid out in the letter we received, but ran into a lot of limitations into understanding the full picture of a criminal case. This is partly because data in the criminal justice system really exists in silos and is maintained solely by a particular agency. It's not always possible to connect all these pieces among the agencies to get the full picture, so we settled on two different forms of analysis for our report. A sample of cases that we collected from observing in court and court clerk data we received from both general sessions and criminal court clerks here in Shelby County. For our larger analysis using the criminal court clerk data, we were able to analyze felony charges filed in Shelby County's criminal court, and when possible, compare those filings to the next 10 largest counties in Tennessee. To gain some deeper insight on that smaller subset of cases, we spent over 100 hours at the Shelby County Criminal Justice Center observing court proceedings, recording extensive details of each of the cases we witnessed, and we also interviewed over 70 individuals related to this project. You'll see on the next slide that as we related to the first question on the letter, it was time it takes to dispose of a criminal case. During our observations in Shelby County General Sessions Court, our observers witnessed 97 cases disposed. Twenty-five percent of those cases were disposed in 37 days or fewer. Half of the cases were disposed of in under 63 days. Despite this, the sample included some major outliers. There were nine cases that were disposed of between 300 days and about 1,600 days. In the larger data we received from the criminal court clerks of different Tennessee counties, we concluded that Shelby County disposes of the most felony charges within a year, but a lower percent of all felony charges within that given year. As you'll see on the next slide of charges filed in 2022, Shelby County was able to dispose of 2,923 of those charges within 365 days of the initial filing date, as represented by the blue sections on that graph on the right. Davidson County, the county with the next highest volume of felony filings, disposed of 2,584 charges within a year of filing. Although Shelby County disposed of a higher number, that number represents only 33% of felony charges filed in Shelby County in 2022 due to the high volume of charges in Shelby. In comparison, David County disposed of 54% of 2022 charges within 365 days. And now I'm going to pass it back over to Lauren, who's going to talk a little bit about our second question, which is rearrest.
So the Lieutenant Governor also wanted to know about the number of career criminals committing offenses while their cases were being disposed, so before they got that final judgment. We found pretty quickly that it's hard to measure that. In our full report, we've included data from the University of Memphis, who y'all heard from two weeks ago, the last time this committee met, and from Just City, and they have different definitions of rearrest, and therefore they have different rates that they found. We were not able to calculate rearrest at the aggregate level because we couldn't connect the data, starting in general sessions court and going through criminal court. We were able, however, to look at our sample of cases that we saw disposed while we were in court, and we sent that case information to community supervision, and they were able to supply us with some additional information. So of those 95 defendants whom we saw disposed, seven were rearrested for a new offense while they were on pretrial release. Six of those were rearrested for a felony and also originally charged with a felony, and our full report includes additional information about the nature of the cases, their prior criminal record, and some additional things. We also found that it was especially hard to measure rearrest because when we sent those 95 defendants to community supervision, three came back and they looked like they were rearrested. But upon closer inspection, really taking a fine-tooth comb to them, we found that one had been in TDOC custody the entire time, so he was not actually out on pretrial release, and two merely had warrants issued for their arrest, but they were not actually arrested in the first place, so they just had additional charges while their technical first case was still pending. So our conclusion here is that it's really tricky to measure, and it requires some determinations about definitions and what data sources you're going to be using. And now David's going to talk about bail.
David Melendez, Comptroller's Office. Because we couldn't do that large data analysis of the rearrest rate in Shelby County, we decided to use data that we received from the general sessions court clerk to do an analysis of bail amounts over time. And so on that left-hand graph on the slideshow, you can see that over time, starting from August 22 up until June 2024, bail amounts have gone up. In August 2022, the average bail amount in Shelby County was around $23,000, but in June 2024, the average amount had increased to approximately $33,000. On that right-hand graph, you can see a comparison of bail amounts awarded in Shelby County versus Davidson County, and you can see that for most of the years, we looked at the bail amount was greater in Davidson County except for in 2024, where the average bail amount in Shelby County was around $5,000 higher than, it was higher in Shelby County than Davidson County. And now on the next slide, Lauren's going to talk about looking at charges between arrest versus how they're prosecuted.
All right. So the third question that we investigated from the Lieutenant Governor was how charges change from the initial charge at arrest to the final charge at disposition. We weren't able to get quite that large of an aggregate sample to look at because the data doesn't connect between general sessions court and criminal court, but we were able to do some things with the data that we had. So in criminal court at the aggregate level, we looked at the graph on the left, the court clerk data. We saw that over time, pretty much the number of charges that are unchanged from start to finish is relatively stable around 60%. That's from 2018 all the way up to 2023. The number of charges that increase over time or decrease over time from that initial filing in criminal court varies some by year. Usually, there's about a 5% difference, but in terms of research, this is very stable. There's nothing really big to look at in terms of how charges might change over these past years. We also looked at the sample of cases that we saw disposed of in criminal court, so the ones that we were physically present for, and we looked at those 30 guilty pleas, and we traced them through time to see how they began in general sessions and how they ended up as we saw them. For 12 of those guilty pleas, there was no information available from general sessions court, so we couldn't determine anything. We were able to make determinations for 18 of those guilty pleas. Of those 18, three had defendants who pled guilty to the original charge, seven pled guilty to a reduced charge, four pled guilty to an elevated charge, and four pled guilty to a combination of increased and decreased charges. Our full report includes a lot more information about those charges, how they changed, what they changed to, and any additional information that we heard while in court. For example, a defendant participating with the prosecution and strengthening a case against a co-defendant, and therefore there was a change in charge kind of as an agreement made. So we tried to give as much information in our full report about how these cases might change from start to finish. And now David will talk about sentencing.
For the Lieutenant Governor's last concern, we looked at sentencing lens in Shelby County over time. To do that, we used data provided to us by the criminal court clerk, and we examined the average sentencing lens for felony classes over time. The graph presented shows average felony sentence lens from 2018 up until around October 1 of 2024, and during that time period, four of the five felony classes saw longer average sentences in 2024 than compared to in 2018. The one exception was in Class C felonies. It's important to note that the chart in front of you does not account for the time a defendant spends in custody before their case is disposed of. As a result, the average sentence lens shown here are shorter than the actual time served. And then on the next slide, with the four concerns spoken to, we're able to make our main conclusion highlighted in the report, which is that while we were able to address four of all the Lieutenant Governor's concerns partially, we frequently encountered data limitations in trying to answer those questions. I think this limitation is especially noticeable when you compare the depth of analysis we're able to give with the cases that we observed in person and then looked up in the Shelby County information system versus the data that we get from the court clerk data that's at the aggregate level. And as such, our key conclusion is that there are significant opportunities to make data and the operations and outcomes of Shelby County's criminal justice system more transparent, accessible, and usable. And to support this, on our next slide, we make three recommendations. The first of these is that we recommend that stakeholders in Shelby County's criminal justice system begin collecting and publicly reporting key metrics. In our full report, we outline 18 specific metrics and define them, developed based on the limitations that we faced during our research. Some of the most critical metrics for addressing the Lieutenant Governor's concerns include the total number of days for a case to be resolved, the number of continuances granted throughout a case's disposition time, whether a defendant was arrested while on pretrial release for another case, the term of a plea agreement offered by the prosecution to a defendant, and whether a convicted offender has prior convictions, and if so, what for. In addition to those metrics, we highlight the urgent need for a unique case ID that remains consistent to a case as it moves between general sessions jurisdiction and criminal court jurisdiction. Currently, case numbers change between court levels, and it made it difficult for us to track felony cases from start to finish with confidence that we were dealing with the same case as data throughout.
Our second recommendation is really Shelby County-specific. We recommend that the Shelby County judges consider ways to reduce time that it takes to dispose of a case. We noticed when we were in court observing, we took meticulous notes on why cases were reset, and we noticed that the main factor was either an attorney was waiting to be appointed, and defendant didn't have one, or a defendant had changed attorneys. And these are things that we feel are within the control system of the Shelby County criminal justice system. Access to attorneys, finding ways to reduce delays overall in cases. Our report also cites the effective criminal case management system, which includes a cost of delay calculator, which really puts a price on how much it costs municipality when cases are delayed, such as the cost of providing a bed for someone in jail, and what that adds up to over time when you think about the thousands of defendants that go through this system annually.
Lastly, while our report focuses on the Shelby County criminal justice system, our conclusions, and especially those related to greater data transparency, are not only applicable to Shelby County and can be applied statewide or even nationally. We recommend that the General Assembly may wish to form a study committee to review this report and make recommendations for greater transparency of data in the criminal justice system and in Shelby County. In doing so, legislators could consider current statewide data systems and reporting requirements. The report also includes resources from Justice Counts, which is an initiative led by the Council of State Governments and the U.S. Department of Justice. We also mentioned metrics listed in the report, as David mentioned earlier, that could be used as a starting point. The report also highlights legislation passed in other states. Particular note is Florida's Criminal Justice Data Transparency Initiative. This initiative pulls together participation from numerous criminal justice stakeholders at the state and local level. On our final slide, we have our contact information for the three researchers you see up at this table, as well as our Director and Assistant Director for OREA. We thank you for allowing us to come out here and share our report with you. Again, we come from the Office of Research and Education Accountability in the Comptroller's Office, and at the bottom of that slide, you can see a link to review our full report. Thank you again, and we can take any questions you might have.
Outstanding. Thank you so much for that. We do have at least one commissioner in the queue, and I've got some questions of my own, but we'll start with Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a few questions. Okay, so you mentioned in the report that there is a difference in how you define rearrest as compared to U of M, and can you tell me the difference, number one? And then the other thing, you all talked about the, from the time of arrest to adjudication, and what exactly was the difference in the length of time for Shelby County and Davidson County? And the reason why I'm asking that is because some of the commissioners, stakeholders, judges, et cetera, we visit Davidson's County crime lab, which we do not have. And I've heard complaints that Sheriff's Department in particular has stated that when they have evidence, they have to determine what is actually they need to process because it takes manpower to actually take the evidence from Shelby County to Jackson, where we have a TBI lab, and I was wondering if that was, you know, taken into consideration in the length of time. And let's see. And then you also talked about data, that's the, data transparency. And so I would love to really talk about that as, you know, individually, how we can support other jurisdictions in requesting from the General Assembly some type of legislation for, you know, next legislative session. Thank you.
Lauren Huddleston. So for your first question, the definition of rearrest, there is no single definition of rearrest. Each researcher kind of has the ability to make his or her own determinations. I believe the University of Memphis report only looked at a section of the criminal justice system, so I think they only looked at general sessions or they only looked at general sessions. We were trying to look at the whole system. So we know that felony cases begin in general sessions. It's kind of the first court. You finish general sessions, and then you go up to criminal court to have the meat of the disposition. However, the system, as it holds the information, has no way to connect a person's case from general sessions to criminal court, so we weren't able to make that large picture determination for rearrest and how long it takes for a case to be disposed. So for us, looking at rearrest, we took those cases where we knew they were disposed, and we looked back individually, looking through the Odyssey system, and we sent those, that information to community supervision, who's able to get back to us. Your second question was the comparison between Shelby County and Davidson County, and so that's kind of a similar answer. We can't make that comparison because the data doesn't exist in a way that we can compare it. We were able to do a lot of fine-tooth combing because we spent 100 hours sitting at 201 observing cases. Without that type of in-person observation, we wouldn't be able to have a lot of the data that we do have because it's not stored in a way that researchers can use to make these determinations for how long something takes. And your third question was about the crime lab and testing?
Yes, because, for example, when evidence is obtained, the Sheriff's Department has determined which is really, you know, they need to take to Jackson, and when they take it to Jackson, of course, then we're not priority, and so it extends out. And so my question then becomes, number one, what is the timeframe average for from arrest to adjudication in Shelby County versus Davidson County? And then also, I was just wondering, as far as factoring in the fact that we do not have a crime lab here in Shelby County.
Yes, thank you. So for arrest to adjudication, we don't have a solid answer for that. We can tell you for our small sample, which we don't want to generalize to the larger public because we just don't, we only spent 100 hours in court, and there are so many hours that you could spend there. And as far as the crime lab, we found that testing for evidence was actually the third reason for delay. So the first two related to attorneys and a defendant having an attorney hired or getting a new attorney, but the third reason was evidence testing. We know that some, certain types of evidence testing, for example, testing bullets and guns takes a lot longer than other testing. And we also know that hiring, staffing, and training new people in the crime lab takes a considerable amount of time. It can take over a year to have someone fully trained in order to do that, and we've included some information about that in our report because we did talk to TBI and some other individuals involved to get a sense for that as well.
All right, great. Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Bradford, you're next.
I want to thank you all for coming down and for this report, and please extend our appreciation to the Comptroller and the Lieutenant Governor. This is very helpful. I know one thing I hear from a lot of constituents is transparency in county government, and I know my friends at the crime beat have also been very concerned about transparency in the criminal justice system. So thank you for this report, and my colleague and I have an item coming up related to this, so thank you for giving us the meat for that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bradford. Commissioner Sugarman, you're back in the queue.
Okay, and so I just want to change the line of questioning real quickly because my concern is, as we know, that general sessions had a bill that failed yesterday, and it was to add one cent sales tax so that we could build a new jail here in Shelby County, and it was going to sunset in eight years, and it failed unfortunately. And I was just wondering, as far as the condition as a jail, right now, they're on temporary air supply as far, and it's just, I don't know if y'all toured the jail and the condition, and so my question then becomes about, you know, pleading out, and then the fact that we have so, a third of the population who have mental health issues, and according to the judges I spoke to, they cannot hear the case until they're stabilized, but the situation they're in, the environment exacerbates their situation. And so I'm just wondering, as far as the number of plea, you know, people pleading out just to get out, is there a significant or a difference between, again, Shelby County and Davidson County, and I was just wondering how the impact of the facility itself may impact the plea deals. And I wonder, again, if it's going to be because of the data. I can't really assess the situation. Thank you.
Hi, Erin Brown from the Comptroller's Office. Thank you for your question. So as far as being able to look into the jail specifically and its links to any potential criminal trial outcomes, we weren't able to view the jail, tour the jail, or really, there's no data that exists on, you know, the impacts of facilities on potential plea deals. I can say that we do have an analysis in our report that covers the percentage of plea deals in Shelby County versus Davidson and the other larger counties. I can get that page number to you as soon as we're done here and talk with it through you if you'd like, but we do have that breakdown as far as how it relates to the jail. Unfortunately, we aren't able to provide any information on that.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. And so I will now...
Excuse me, Chair. He was about to speak.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, David.
I was just going to, the page number, 35 and 36, and there's an exhibit on there that shows the breakdown by, you have Davidson, Hamilton, Knox, and Shelby County by how the case was disposed of, and to get to how many, the proportion that are being disposed via a plea, there's two columns you'd want to look at, which is the guilty plea as charged, and then guilty plea to a lesser charge.
All right. Again, apologies for stepping on you there. So I have a number of questions. First is, you know, you talk about the number or the volume of cases coming through Shelby and how, you know, we really do have a lot that we're disposing now, but still taking, you know, as a percentage, maybe taking longer. I just wonder, in general, did you find, or do you, do you consider the evidence that you've accumulated, is that evidence that we need additional divisions or judges in Shelby County? And the reason I ask that, we lost a, we lost a criminal division last year. Is any of that due to the lack of data? Or that lack of aggregate data?
Erin and I had previously, last year, we'd worked on something called a weighted caseload study. That is typically what the state uses to talk about the allocation and division of judicial resources, as far as is there enough staffing of state-level trial judges in the different judicial districts. Currently, for that report, in brief summary, the data for that is also not in a perfect state right now, and that is pending some updates that haven't been done since prior to COVID-19. That is something that we're looking to put out and have data for in the next year or two.
Got it. Thank you so much for that. Next, I know, I know you have those eight, I think it's 18, metrics that you have as recommendations. A lot of this is, I'm trying to get to, what can we do locally? I know you have some recommendations for the General Assembly. On the local level with that matrix, or perhaps in another format, do you have any kind of breakdown or something that you could share with us about who owns which piece? So that would kind of be the first part of my question. Then the second part is, is there anyone we could point to who's sort of the overall authority who could help us shepherd through some of these needed changes that we need to make?
Thank you for your question. So part of the reason that the recommendation is so open-ended is because the data for criminal justice systems is so intricate and so intertwined, and it's very, very difficult to be able to point to one individual agency and say, this person or this group of people needs to be responsible for this metric. So we decided to leave it up to the agencies here in Shelby County. Everyone that we spoke to was very willing and very open to the idea of increasing data transparency, so we just decided to put this out as a conversation starter to be able to start to figure out how to increase data transparency here.
In the appendix of our report, because we have the exhibit that gives that 18, those 18 metrics, and then we say, if it is collected, this is who houses it. But then when we talk about Florida's legislation, what they do is they also go through and put into legislation, this is who's housing this data, and this is who that they're going to be sending it to. So we don't want to be prescriptive into Florida's... So we don't want to be prescriptive and say Florida is, their makeup is different than our state. But they went through and crafting that legislation to say, this is who has it and this is who it would be best for everyone to send it to, to put out that final product.
What about for this body in particular? Do you have any recommendations for the county's legislative body? I know, again, you've got recommendations for the General Assembly, perhaps some statewide things, some things particular to judges, um, and then the, the people who are in the criminal justice system, but what about county legislative?
Um, yes. So really any of the recommendations we provide in our report could be applied to municipal government as well. Working with your local judges to be able to reduce delays or working with your agencies here in Shelby County to figure out the best way to publish this data and make it accessible to the Shelby County citizens, the rest of the state. Those are all things that you guys can absolutely get your, get your hands in. Really starting with conversations with your agencies here in Shelby County.
Setting definitions, standardized definitions of the data that you guys want to see get collected. Uh, that's something, when we were doing our research for this, we looked at other states, but also we ourselves struggled with, like when Lauren was talking about rearrest, that we had, we consulted different reports and our issue with just sticking with one of them is that they were looking at different things because they had taken the same term and defined it two different ways. Uh, Florida's legislation, again, the reference that they set in the statute, when we say rearrest, this is what we mean. And this is who's going to be that's doing it. And so if there is data that you guys are interested to learn about and you do want to delegate the responsibility, maybe before doing that, setting a definition of what it is that you mean specifically, because some of it can seem intuitive, but it isn't. Then that can best inform, well, whose responsibility is it to be putting this together?
Um, and I guess, and then just to follow up on that, you have a, um, a line that stood out to me in the executive's, uh, summary that said, the public cannot see the big picture. And that really is, you know, that's very important. It's also important, I would think, for all those involved in the system itself to have a sense of the big picture and to be working on it. Because as my colleague stated, we have an issue with, um, the condition of our jail and we don't want anyone staying there longer than they need to because people are losing their lives in the jail. And so we have, you know, we need the system to speed up, um, for, if for only that reason alone is to save, save lives of people who've not been convicted of anything yet. Um, are, and so I have a couple of commissioners back in the queue, but I do want to, my last question would be, are there any, or what are the next, or what are the first next steps that you would recommend?
Lauren Huddleston. I'd recommend what's most important to you. Um, you know, we have at the end of our report, information about effective case flow management. And that's a national initiative to try to get cases through faster. So if we're concerned about people who are in jail for too long or people who maybe don't understand the process, because it is very confusing even to well-educated people, looking at that effective case flow management and seeing if there's something in there that maybe you could start small by considering and implementing, talking to the judges, talking to judicial commissioners, talking to the staff and seeing if you can start at least in one way, maybe start measuring something yourself and seeing if you can make an improvement in some area. Um, you know, we're researchers and we like to look at things from a really big picture, but it doesn't have to be that way. You can start with whatever's
Idea of the follow-up and with, um, the new ERP system, I'm just curious if we could have a follow-up session and maybe have like the judges, MPD, the Sheriff's Department, the DA, et cetera, um, come to us and tell us what the systems can do and cannot do and what we need to do because we are in the process of developing ERP. And I've heard some pushback or feedback, you know, how we want to take it from the various entities about how this is not communicating. Like for example, in my district, we have like city and county areas. And so it's like jurisdiction on the MPD and the Sheriff's Department. And so when I ask for data for my district as far as like criminal activity, et cetera, it takes months because they're saying you have to input this manually, et cetera. So I'm just curious to see where we're at, where we need to go and how as a commission we can support their efforts. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much for that, Commissioner. And I would, I agree with you that, um, the need for us to do that. Um, we have heard through the Budget Subcommittee, some of these issues, we've, we've heard from the general sessions court clerk as well as a criminal court clerk. And we have asked some of those questions, but to have them in separate meetings on separate days, it would be, I, I think, agree, beneficial to have them all together so we can all have a sense of where they're headed and what, to what extent we need to support those efforts. Yeah. Thanks for bringing that. Commissioner Caswell.
Thank you Chair. And I, I know Commissioner Sugarman was kind of going down some of the same lines too. What I think about this report too, and I had some judges in, at a, one of my community meetings about a week ago and some judicial commissioners, and they was talking about, and I was wondering in this, did you all capture this? Like with some of the law enforcement reports when they come into the courts and how they are badly written and maybe they have to be kicked out because they didn't do the details of what that actual crime was committed. Was any of that captured in this and saying like, it was because of the police report? It was not captured?
Thank you for your question. So we tried to look at the big data and that kind of information is not stored in any of our big data systems. It would be great if it was so that we could know exactly why some cases are perhaps dismissed. Um, but when you look at the thousands of cases, we just know that it was dismissed. We do have some information about dismissals in court from our case observations. So when a witness doesn't show up and the prosecution has essentially no choice but to dismiss it, we have information about that. We did see a few police errors in our observations, but it wasn't enough to really report on it.
Far, because as my colleague, uh, mentioned, we do have one more item on the agenda about this. Uh, but then we also have two comment cards. So, um, if at least one of you would relinquish a seat and I'll bring up our first comment card, um, which is Ron Walker, if you would come forward. And thank you all again so much for being with us. Ron Walker, if you would give us your name and your address and you will have two or three minutes. I forget. Two? Two, oh, we'll just, uh, three. We'll say three. All right.
Ron Walker, 1878 Laurel Lane, Germantown, Tennessee, 38139. I'm here with Memphis Crime Beat this morning. I would like to thank the Comptroller's team for being here today for this report. Uh, we're excited about the report as this report fits perfectly with the mission of Memphis Crime Beat. We saw in the conclusions, the words transparency and accountability. And that's what we are trying to do is reduce crime by bringing transparency and accountability to the whole justice process. Uh, the report focuses on the missing link of what we call the life of a crime. We try to break down the different pieces of how a crime moves through the system. And we've come up with the visual of a crime funnel. And if you think of a funnel that's very big at the top, throw 111,000 criminal offenses from 2024 into that funnel. Start with 111,000. I talked about this two weeks ago at the University of Memphis report, so it may sound familiar. But we moved through that crime funnel and then how many of those are arrested or cleared? Now we move down to 17%. So out of the 111,000 crimes, 92,000 are not cleared, not solved. We don't know who committed them. That funnel gets awfully narrow as we move on down the list. Then we move into the bail process. And that came up, um, talking about the rearrest rate and the definitions and how you define it. University of Memphis, their latest report, I do think it covers criminal as well as general session. But it, it shows that up to 21% of those that are, get initial bail are rearrested and that's within 500 days. 21% your report, I believe, shows seven. We maintain that both of those reports are grossly understated for the simple fact that these reports do not and cannot capture those criminal offenses that occur where there's no arrests made. Remember, 83% of their offenses are not cleared. So therefore the, the rearrest rate is focusing on a very small segment of the crimes that are being committed. Too long in the process. Justice delayed is justice denied, not just to the defendant, but to the victims as well. These cases are dragging on, creating agonizing situations for all involved. The last piece of the equation looks at the final dispositions. Over half of these cases are released, or I'm sorry, dismissed or no post. So you start out with 111,000, 17,000 arrested, more arrests happens once they're on bail and then half of those cases are thrown out. So the system is a mess as this report lays out. The data is a mess as this report lays out. We've been working on this for about the same timeframe. We started just over a year ago with a court watch program, trying to get this information and it's a struggle every day. We look forward to working with the Comptroller's Office and with this data and with this whole commission to try to move this forward into the right, in the right direction. Our volunteer court watchers are in the courts reporting on what they're finding from these cases, but we need the data. We can't get our hands on the data and without data, you can't manage it. If you can't measure it, you can't manage it. And that's what y'all are running into as well. So Leslie Taylor, founder and, um, director of Memphis Crime Beat sent y'all an email a couple of weeks ago, about a week ago. We're trying to get more, more and more meetings to share our mission, to share our approach, to help y'all out as best we can. Uh, Leslie has some comments after this, so, um, thank you for your time. Thank you for what you do for Memphis and Shelby County. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Taylor? Again, if you give us your name and your address, you have three minutes.
Uh, Leslie Taylor, 4315 Tuckahoe Road. I am the Executive Director of Memphis Crime Beat. I have to take off my glasses to read. Uh, just six weeks prior to the Lieutenant Governor McNally requesting the Comptroller's Office investigate and with the very same concerns, Memphis Crime Beat started our court watch program. Now, a little more than a year later, it is clear that not only have we faced the same challenges, the Comptrollers, as the Comptroller's team, but we have come to many of the same conclusions. We owe it not only to the Memphis community, but to all taxpayers whose resources were used to perform this investigation, to hear the conclusion of the report, and importantly, to do something about it. Allowing problems we know to continue is shameful and disrespectful to our citizens. Hence, we must require agencies to report on the metrics outlined in the report. Some things we know the clerks can report on relatively quickly and easily. Other things will take more time, but we think it is reasonable to expect that by the end of 2025, the clerks' offices in cooperation with law enforcement, the district attorney and pre-trial services are capable of reporting on all 18 metrics outlined in the Comptroller's report. For example, the clerks should immediately be required on a monthly basis to report how long it is taking to dispose of cases by courtroom in each criminal and general sessions courts. This is data we have been requesting for more than a year, public data, and has not yet been provided by anyone that we have asked. We know that the clerks are entering the data because we can see it in Odyssey and therefore it should not be a large undertaking to report it. The clerks also need to begin immediately documenting who requests the continuance and why. They are not currently doing this, which is the reason we directed our volunteers to document the very, this very information when they go to court. The report recommends a study committee at the state level. I would prefer that that work take place within our community. I recommend one person be identified to lead the data collection effort because we cannot allow this project to be bogged down in a committee. A cooperative plan needs to be developed, perhaps utilizing a cross-functional team to gather data with the goal of publication by the end of 2025. Perhaps even this could be outsourced. The data will indicate areas where improvements must be made. So with that information in hand, plans to address the problems and inefficiencies can be created by early 2026. Appropriate initiatives and goals will need to be developed, complete with tracking to measure our progress. I am begging you, our elected leaders, to act and address the problems outlined in the Comptroller's report. Make public information public. Improving the justice system is good for victims, defendants and everyone in each of your districts. We at Memphis Crime Beat have been volunteering our time over the last year working on this problem. This is a full-time job for me now. We have a good idea of where the data is and we want to help. Please empower us to do so. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Taylor. All right. That, um, I see no one else in our queue. That will conclude our discussion. Can we read item number two, please?
Item two is a resolution receiving and filing report produced by the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury's Office of Research and Education Accountability, following its investigation of the criminal justice system in Shelby County and requesting Shelby County leaders adopt its recommendations. Sponsored by Commissioner McRight and Commissioner David C. Bradford, Jr.
Thank you. Thank you. This item's been moved by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Caswell. Um, I don't have anyone in the queue yet, but I did, Commissioner Mills, I'll go to you.
I was going to let you speak first, but I just have one question. Thank you for your presentation. That was very, very well done. Is this a one-time or is it going to be, ever happen again, um, the report?
As of now, this is the only report on the topic we've been asked to publish.
Okay. It was great information. I wish we could get more of it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Um, one thing I guess I, you know, this resolution is, is drafted in such a way that it's, it's a request. And that's something that, you know, in, in, in speaking with, with members of the public who are asking for this data and you all are encountering these barriers and getting the data, it seems to me that that's the limit of, of this body is we can make the request. Uh, the clerks are separately elected, the, the judges are separately elected. Uh, and so all of these, uh, people, like you stated, there's a lot of people and it's an, an intricate, uh, web of people who are involved. But, um, am I wrong in, in my understanding that that's, that's about all we can do is make that request? Or are there, that you know of, are there other steps that this body can take?
I'm not sure we can really speak to the ability of this body to make any specific things. Um, but would encourage you to, if you have some time, to look at the resources at the end of our report. So Florida, the law that David mentioned repeatedly, that was a statewide initiative, but there's nothing in there that can't happen more locally. Um, you know, looking at that legislation, the way it's drafted, even just defining terms and doing things in that regard. Um, and I think that there's a real, based on our interviews and all of our data findings, I think there's a real, um, desire amongst the different organizations, agencies, people to have this change made.
Great. That's great to hear. Well, thank you again for your, your team's time in coming here. Please relay our thanks to, to the Comptroller himself as well as to the Lieutenant Governor for putting all this all into motion. We appreciate you very much. Seeing no one else in the queue, let's take this item two vote. Commissioners, cast your votes, please. If all members have voted, let's close the screen and report the tally.
We have I-votes from Commissioners Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Wright and Bradford. We have five I-votes.
Thank you. That item moves down with a favorable recommendation. And again, thank you all for being with us. That will conclude Committee Number Four.
All right. I'll call to order Committee Number Five, Land Use, Planning, Transportation and Codes. If we could read the first item.
Item one is a resolution approving a contract with Exella Inc. for the provision of software maintenance and support services for the Division of Planning and Development and all associated city and county agency partners. The contract commences upon execution and will continue through February 6, 2026 with two additional one-year options to renew. This item requires expenditure of construction code enforcement enterprise funds in the amount of $725,497.52. Sponsored by Commissioner Shante K. Avant.
Thank you. This item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman. I have seconded it. Director Xena, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. John Xena, Planning and Development. Uh, in 2018, we procured the Exella Civic Platform, uh, cloud-based software system to manage all of our permitting operations in planning and development. We also have several partners, uh, who administer the development process through city and county engineering, uh, city public works, uh, and some of the suburban municipalities as well, uh, that use it. Uh, when this contract was initially executed When this contract was initially executed in 2018, it had annual renewals for licensing costs for our permitting software, but those renewals are now complete, and so this contract would allow us three additional years of software licenses to continue using that system. That really is the backbone of how we operate permitting in Shelby County now.
All right. Thank you, Director Xena. I don't see anyone in the queue, so let's take this item to a vote. All right, and if all Commissioners have had the opportunity to vote, let's tally the results.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, and Bradford. We have four eye votes.
Thank you. That item will go down with a favorable recommendation. Please read item number two.
Item two is an ordinance first reading. Ordinance amending the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code is adopted by Shelby County on August 9, 2010, to approve a zoning district change pursuant to Chapter 9.5 for property in unincorporated Shelby County located at 10827 U.S. Highway 64, being case number Z 2024-011CO, sponsored by Commissioner Shontay Avant. This item was deferred in March 26, 2025, committee meeting.
Thank you. This item has been moved by Commissioner Sugarman. I have seconded the item. Mr. Ragsdale, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brett Ragsdale with Division of Planning and Development. We do have a short presentation. If you want to see it, we can put it on your screens, or we have it here. Ms. Longstreet can make that presentation if you'd like. We also have the applicant here, if you'd like to hear from them.
If we can do a quick presentation, I think that'd be good. Thank you.
This is Alexis Longstreet with DPD. This case is zoning case 2024-011, located at 10827 U.S. Highway 64. This is a proposal for a rezoning from conservation agriculture to commercial mixed-use three zoning. The property is located in the county with a conservation agriculture zoning designation, as well as a current vacant land use designation as well. And in the presentation and site photos, the lot is currently vacant. The applicant's proposing to rezone more or less eight acres of the subject property to commercial mixed-use three to allow for limited outdoor self-storage facility of recreational vehicles and boats. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Hold on, I'm waiting for the screen to come back up. All right. I don't see any Commissioners in the queue at this. Commissioner Brooks?
I can't. As usual, my screen is not working, but I do have a question.
Go for it.
So, can you give me a little more history in reference to the applicant here?
Yes, and we can invite the applicant to as well come up to explain their property.
David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 State Pleasant North Bartlett. Happy to answer any questions that you have. The owners of the property are here. They're the ones making the request. They've got a large parcel. We didn't really see it in the staff report. This is just the frontage portion of it, out towards the Highway 64 frontage.
Okay. This is a frontage at their residential?
No, ma'am. It's, there's a barn and an outbuilding located on this property right now, but it's, other than that, it's vacant. It's not a residential property.
And you all own it? Can you step forward? Just give your name for the record, so the record be.
James Hearn, 9756 Greens Bruce.
H-E-A-R-D?
H-E-A-R-N.
Hearn. Okay, okay. And so, for the record, you said this is what, the property description?
It's just, right now, we have horses on, like, the back part of it. We just kinda use it as an extension of our backyard, basically.
Okay. And so, you're selling the front portion of it?
No, ma'am. We don't wanna sell anything. We just wanna take a portion of it on the front and kinda, I guess, help offset some of the cost of the property, because we use the property, you know, for our horses and things like that.
Okay.
We don't, we don't never wanna change that.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. All right. Seeing no other Commissioners in the queue, let's take this item to the vote. This is the first reading, so this will have two more readings after this. All right.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Caswell, Sugarman, Bradford, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioner Mills has abstained. We have, I'm sorry, correction. We have eye votes from Commissioners Caswell, Sugarman, Bradford, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioners Mills and Brooks have abstained. We have four ayes and two abstained.
Thank you. That item will go down with a favorable recommendation. This concludes Committee Land Use. Thank you. All right. Thank you. I'm gonna call to order Committee Number Six, Education. If we can read item number one.
Item one is ordinance third reading. Joint Ordinance of Shelby County Government and the City of Memphis to continue a program for a high-quality early childhood, pre-kindergarten, pre-K for all, sponsored by Commissioner Brittany Thornton, Chairman Michael Whaley, Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs, Commissioner Erica Sugarman, Commissioner Mikel Lowry, Commissioner Shontay K. Avant, Commissioner Charlie A. Caswell, Jr., and Commissioner McRight.
All right. Thank you. This item was moved by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Bradford?
Yeah, I had a question from, I believe it was actually the mayor of Germantown, related to what does this mean for the municipalities? There's a lot of discussion in education for all, but then there's also a lot of discussion related around the city of Memphis, and so he was just trying to get an understanding of that and the funding source. I think I've emailed the sponsors, as well as first eight, his questions, and just hoping we can get those responses before we vote on Monday. Yeah, great. Thanks, Commissioner Bradford. I'll have response to all those questions by today. In fact, most of them are already finished, so I just wanted to make sure they're fully answered before sending them over. One broader note I'll make, though, on that is that, and Dr. Thomas will turn it over to you if you want to add anything additional, but the whole concept of updating the ordinance is to expand it across Shelby County. So, if we did nothing, it stays narrowly tailored in terms of, like, income eligibility, age eligibility, but by expanding it to pre-K for all, to eventually get there, it would allow for anyone in Shelby County to be eligible. So, currently, the only municipalities that participate in the program are Millington and Bartlett, but I think the vision, of course, is that that expands, you know, should we approve this, it would make everyone eligible, which is the vision. But did you want to add, Director Thomas, did you want anything more on that?
No, that's right. Thank you, Commissioner Whaley. Good morning. Candace Thomas, First State Memphis, 1350 Concourse Avenue, Suite 481. We have worked, you may remember that for over a year, we did a pre-K landscape assessment, and we met with every district, many community members who own childcare centers, family day homes, and we talked to Lakeland, Arlington, Bartlett. We did not, unfortunately, we weren't able to talk to Germantown about our pre-K plans at that point, but as you know, we are very, very willing to partner with anyone in the community who wants to advance early learning, and so we do hope that Germantown will join us in this effort.
Well, it appears that since you weren't able to talk to Germantown, that's probably why they have some questions, so I will probably put you in contact just through email, and then that way they can follow up with anything further they may need. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Brooks?
Thank you. My screen is inoperative again. First of all, let me just set the record straight. Of course, I support pre-K. I'm a former teacher. I support pre-K for all children, all children, regardless of income, race, ethnicity, gender, and anything else. My question has been around the state bill, and I appreciate you providing this. I haven't had the opportunity to do the research, providing this for us, but I appreciate you doing that. And I see where the bill has been taken off notice and filed in the Senate Education Committee. And my concern was to understand whether or not we were providing the best possible pre-K, whether this first aid that you're whirling out would be better than or less than what the state was trying to pass, because it's important, education is so important. We know that. We know that for sure. It's real important, so we need to make sure that babies, young children, the first aid years are widely, if we can, give them to as many as possible. So, I guess my only standing question, remaining question would be, how many children are we able to cover here?
Good morning, Commissioner Brooks. Right now, First State Memphis, with city and county dollars, we serve approximately 1,600 children with city and county dollars, but pre-K overall in Memphis and Shelby County has a few funding streams. So, in general, we have about 8,500 kids in pre-K in this community. The money that the city and county spends on early learning.
Are those the one, you're serving 8,500?
We're serving 1,600.
So, what are you counting? Who's serving 8,500?
There are a few funding streams for pre-K. The state funds pre-K, as you've mentioned. It's called voluntary pre-K. The federal government funds pre-K. That's with Head Start dollars. You also fund pre-K through what you call Fund One. So, there are several funding streams, and I can get that to you if you want to see it on paper. And all of those funding streams put together, we have 8,500 pre-K seats.
How many do we need?
We need roughly for four-year-olds, we're gonna, to serve about 75% of four-year-olds in Shelby County, we need about 9,500 pre-K seats.
So, 100%. Why are we picking out a number? Why don't we serve all children that are eligible to be served?
Absolutely. That would be the goal, but we also know that pre-K is voluntary, so families don't have to sign their kids up for it, and there are gonna be some families who opt out because they have someone at home's gonna care for a kid, because they're gonna go to a private school, because they may have a nanny or another situation, so that is why we don't say 100%.
Well, I'm just saying.
All right. Commissioner Brooks, did you want to have your additional time?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
No, I guess my only concern is that we have, we send the message that, you know, we want to have 100% in anyone, I'm thinking about children being educated, so if nanny can do it, and, you know, all of those other outlets, that's fine and good, but as far as public money, let's send the message that we have 100, we want to have 100% of eligible children enrolled, so that all children will come and not just selected few. That's, you know, that's all. I think we need to send the right message, so we'll get as many children as possible. And I understand your point about the other, you know, homeschools and all of that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. Having not heard your full presentation, I do want to ask questions about some of the data that I saw presented in your last meeting, specifically around Oak Haven and the South Memphis parts of District 10. If you could just talk about what operators, and I guess this is data that you would need to bring back, but what operators exist in those areas, particularly in Oak Haven? We've had Judge Sugarman come down to talk about, I want to say, a data point of about 40% of those juveniles that are detained are coming from the Oak Haven area, and so when I think about the infrastructure there and how in the data that was presented, there was not a first aid presence within Oak Haven, that those two things might correlate themselves. So, if you could talk about that on Monday, then that would be super helpful.
Okay. Will do. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Thornton. Thank you again, Dr. Thomas. All right. Seeing no one else on the screen, we can take item one to vote. Okay, we can close the screen and report the tally.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Caswell, Mills, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have seven eye votes.
Okay. Item one will go down with a favorable recommendation. Commissioner Thornton, I'll turn it back over to you to close out Committee Six.
Thank you, Chair. Madam Pumentarian, can you read item number two?
Item two is a resolution to establish an advisory board to consult and provide expertise and support of the Memphis-Shelby County School Board, sponsored by Commissioner Shontay Avant and Chairman Michael Whaley. The item was for a back-to-committee in March 31, 2025, commission meeting.
Thank you. This item has been moved by Chairman Whaley, seconded by Commissioner Caswell. Do we have, okay, Chairman Whaley, you recognize?
Yep. Thanks so much. I'm just gonna make a motion to refer this to April 30th. Committee?
We have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second? Second by Commissioner Bradford. Can we do this without objection? Hearing none, so moved. Madam Pumentarian, we do have comment cards, I'm told, for this, the previous item. I don't have them before me. Chairman, do you have them? Director Thomas, do you know where they turned them in? Okay. Give us one second. We have a comment card from Ms. Yolanda Gibson. And Director Thomas, do we have others, or is it just one? Just one. Perfect. All right, Ms. Gibson, thank you for your patience. If you could just say your name and address for the record.
My name is Yolanda Gibson. Once you have a seat and just press, no worries, just have a seat and press the mic.
And your comment, ma'am, is on the item for the early quality childhood pre-K for all?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Name and address, and you got the floor.
My name is Yolanda Gibson, and my address is 1557 Southwest Station Road, Memphis, Tennessee, 38117. And my occupation, I'm a family childcare owner, so I wanted to speak with you guys about the pre-K for all program, and I commend you on what you were speaking on, Commissioner Brooks, that it is important, that it is from, for all ages. So, I want to support this bill due to the fact that pre-K is extremely important for all. that pre-K is extremely important for all ages. From my personal experience, I've taught school from me teaching kids from 12th grade to pre-K and kindergarten, the importance of the educational that is lost in our school system. So in my experience, it starts with the parent. It starts when the mother's pregnant. We have to talk to that one. We have to educate it. So if we put those factors out there, that it starts there. When we get to pre-K, the things that have lost when it was started saying at five and four, if we're adding this age of three, then we can go to two, and it should be for all ages. Because in my experience, I have kids that are one and two, and they can speak dual languages because of the care that they're in with me. So it lets you know that the kids care and learn these things, but we have to set the platform for this information to be led to them. And sometimes it also starts, we know, at home. But if we can't always give them what they need at home, the next big step is when they're in the educational school setting. And those things are very fundamental to our kids when it comes to just their exposure to education. So we can't have kids that we expect, because they play sports, to be in 12th grade from my own personal experience in teaching school where these kids cannot write or read their names in the 12th grade. And that's very sad for our educational system. So we have to redirect that. In order to redirect that is what I know in my own educational experience, being from an educational background with my family, also taught in the school system. Now, on my own family, they home in Memphis, it all starts, and I see the change. So if you find someone that's passionate, and you find those funds that help support us, because I have to say, where we're putting money in different places, if we put it in education, we have to look at these kids. They can be beyond what you guys are sitting here now. They could be a doctor, teacher, lawyer. And I even teach the kids that come across me, even if you choose to be a sanitation worker, why it's important to be that sanitation worker? Why do you need to have skills behind you, education behind you, take it in pride? Because why? We can't just say they need to be a doctor, or lawyer, or a teacher. We need people to take away our trash because we can't do it. So even if you're working at fast food, do these things with dignity and know how to spell your name because the first thing you're supposed to learn as a child is your name, how to spell your name. Your mom, it's just not mom and dad. What is your parent's name? Because if they get lost, how they're going to tell safe responders, anyone that's going to help them? So all those things are very fundamental at a young age. So in order to do that, we're kind of working backwards where we should have started here before. But now we have to keep making these steps backwards to get this educational system corrected. Because the kids can learn it. It's just making sure we get those correct tools to them, like STEMS, extending the STEMS to them. In my family, they home, I offer STEM, Spanish, religion, I mean soccer, gymnast. I offer all these things to my kids in the family, they home. Why? Because they need it. We don't need to wait till the last minute. Let's correct these things now. And I know you spoke of before, and Dr. Candace does as well. A lot of families don't have the opportunity to send their kids to private school. And a lot of people don't have nannies at home. So those families that need this care, let's provide those things that they need and make it for all, and make it where there shouldn't be an income base behind it that stopped these parents from making those decisions. And being that I am from family, they home, yes, I need the income to provide for my means and necessities. But at the same time, I still backside on my own to help families who cannot pay for care. But I want it to be seen across the board that all these things are fundamental and needed for kids. Make that exposure there for them. Make it available. Yes, I was able to send my daughter to private school, but one thing I did, that private school learning, what I seen was lost in the school system when I taught school, I make sure all those things are implanted in my children up under my platform.
Thank you so much for your service to Shelby County and your support of this ordinance. It means a lot. Thank you, Ms. Gibson. And hearing no other public comment cards. Actually, we've got another one? Okay, thank you. We appreciate you, Ms. Gibson. Okay. So the second public comment card is related to item number two. Ms. LaShonta Rudd, you are recognized.
And that item was with regard to the establishment of an advisory board to consult and provide expertise in support of the Memphis-Shelby County School Board.
Nice. If you could just say your name and address for the record.
Good morning. I'm LaShonta Rudd. Address is on the card. I just want to be real quick because I've already talked about this last week as it relates to the advisory board. I do not think, the people of Memphis and Shelby County, we don't think that it is a good idea for you all to appoint the advisory board or the nine-member managing board for the school board. They're not listening to anything that the community has to say. They're not listening to their constituents. And the situation is getting worse and worse by the day. I have never seen such a mess in my entire life. And I'm going to say this, and I'm done. I thank God for my 48 years of living. And I know that doing the right thing is not always popular, y'all. But we must do what's right for this community. Why do we keep on self-inflicting pain upon our people? It's ridiculous, and it needs to stop. What is self-infliction? It's putting pain upon yourselves. That's what they're doing. The board members are not listening to the community, and they show enough ain't going to listen to y'all because they're in a position now where they feel like they can just do whatever they want to do. So thank you for listening this morning. You all have a great day and continue to serve the people of this county and city. Thank you very much. Good to see you, Charlie. I'm praying for you.
Thank you, Ms. Rudd.
You're welcome.
All right. Seeing no other public comment cards, this will adjourn Committee Number Six, Education.
All right, we'll call it our Committee Number One, Budget and Finance. If we can read item number one.
Item one is a resolution approving contract with the Masters Touch LLC to provide tax notice mailing services for Shelby County government and municipalities commencing on July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods upon written consent of the parties. This item requires expenditure of trustee FY 2026 general funds in the amount not to exceed $121,678.45. Sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bivs.
All right, thank you. If we can get a mover and seconder, moved by Commissioner Caswell, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. All right, good morning, Trustee Newman.
Good morning, Chairman and Commission. This is the trustee's contract for mailing and printing the annual tax notices and all the other mailings we do. Does not include postage, which we pay directly to the post office. But it's a new contract. It went out to RFP. It was bid. And we had one bidder, so this is it, which is the same one we have now. So I would appreciate your approval. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for the report. Seeing no Commissioners on the screen, I think we can prepare this item for vote. Okay, we can close the screen and record the tally.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Wright, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have six eye votes.
Okay, item one will go down with a favorable recommendation. Item number two.
Item two is a resolution amending the FY 2025 operating budget and appropriating and expanding funds for the purposes of addressing poverty, education, healthcare, and various other needs in Shelby County. This item requires expenditure of FY 2025 general funds in the amount of $540,000. Sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bivs.
Okay, this item is moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Caswell. All right, at the request of the sponsor, the sponsor's requested withdraw this item, so I'm going to move to withdraw. All right, great. No objection. Item two will be withdrawn. We have an add-on item here, resolution calling the Shelby County Board of Equalization into session. This will be item three. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, if we can read item three.
Item three is an add-on item. Item three is a resolution calling the Shelby County Board of Equalization into its session for tax year 2025. Sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bivs.
Okay. Okay, moved by Commissioner Caswell, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. Okay, all right, very good. Good morning.
Good morning. Robert Rowland County Attorney's Office, here with Tamika Stanton-Riley, Director of the Board of Equalization. Thank you for the add-on. This is the annual resolution calling the Board of Equalization into session to accept and to hear property tax appeals. By state law, their session must begin May 1st. This is, 2025 is, of course, a reappraisal year. We're expecting several thousand more appeals than normal, than a normal year. The resolution sets a filing deadline to appeal your property taxes, filing deadline of June 30th, which is the same as in the last many, many years.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. And I'm sensing a lot of interest in this, this process this year. Can you tell us, just like, how, how does someone, how does a homeowner get before the board? Where, where does it meet sort of that? Walk me through that process, please.
Certainly. Thank you for that. Tamika Stanton-Riley, Administrator for the Board of Equalization. Property owners are able to file online by going to our website, boe Shelleycountytn.gov. And they are also able to come into our office at 1075 Mullins Station. They can also download an appeal form and mail it in. We do find that filing online is more convenient, and it also allows taxpayers to file or to schedule their appeal online.
And then do those homeowners attend a meeting in person?
Yes, our meetings are held in person.
And that's on the Mullins?
It is, 1075 Mullins Station, yes, sir.
Okay. And is that, is there like a published agenda in advance of those who are being heard, or how does it work?
Not who is being heard. We do mail notice to the taxpayers approximately 10 days prior, more than 10 days prior to the hearing. But we do let the, via sunshine, let the taxpayers know what days that we are hearing, which is typically Monday through Thursdays.
So the notice would have a day of when their matter would be heard by the board? Is that what you're saying?
Not the sunshine, but no, they would be mailed notice of when they are going to be heard.
Okay. And that's a particular day, or that's a span of days?
No, that is a particular day. They receive an appointment letter.
Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Brooks?
Just a couple of questions in reference to your process here. I was at a meeting yesterday with the assessor, and he did mention, I got the wrong thing in front of me. Excuse me. He did mention the appeals board. But I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, how do we get the word out? How do we let people know? Because I was at a meeting on Monday night, and people were complaining, voicing discontent, if you will, about, you know, the tax notices, you know, being a little bit up. So how do we get the word out? You all have a process for noticing people that, you know, we are in place here, come see us, talk to us, you know, that kind of thing. What do you say?
Thank you for that question. The assessor's office, Tennessee law requires the assessor's office to send notice to publications letting the community know that our appeal acceptance period is May 1st through June 30th. They send out to a total of 13 publications.
In Shelby County?
Within Shelby County.
Okay, so are there, are there any informal avenues to reach people? Because, you know, I can just say, people in my district, District 7, people I know, I mean, probably don't subscribe to any of the general circulation newspapers, if you will. So a lot of my constituents rely on informal avenues of communication, church, organization, neighborhood organizations, that kind of thing. So are you all geared up to flow information through those entities?
Certainly, when asked, and also through the assessor's office. We give them our brochures. We give them our information because we know they have direct access at several community events. So we do give that information to the assessor and encourage them.
Okay, well, I'm going to have, I'll have several events. Have already had several events. We'll have one on Thursday night, tomorrow night. So if you'll give me your little flyer, then I can pass it out or send it out, email it, send it by bird, whatever, to my constituents because I want them to know.
I have that with me, and I'll be glad to give that to you.
Thank you so much. Okay, okay.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Seeing no one on the screen, we can take this item to a vote. Okay, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Caswell, Sugarman, Wright, Thornton, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have six eye votes.
Okay, item three will go down with a favorable recommendation. We have one more add-on. This is item number four. If we can read that into the record, please.
Item four is an add-on item. Item four is a resolution to amend Resolution 38 from the July 22nd, 2024 Shelby County Commission Meeting to reallocate and appropriate fiscal year FY 2025 Capital Movement Project CIP funds in the amount of $77,901 from Public Works for the purpose of installing cameras in District 12. This item requires a reallocation of County Commission CIP funds in the amount not to exceed $77,901. Sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman.
Okay, thank you. This is moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Sugarman?
Thank you, Chair. And so I just want to remind my colleagues that this money, was CIP money that everyone has spent, all my colleagues have spent except for me. And so when I was speaking to Public Works, this amount of money was not enough to replace the swing sets, the water fountain, et cetera, at Lawrence Park. In fact, I brought before the commission a request to receive $300,000 for Lawrence Park, which is in Hickory Hill, and this commission voted that down. And so this is just not enough to do anything at Lawrence Park. And so my district, my constituents have asked for more cameras. And so I'm just, you know, commenting with them, what they want is to use the money for additional cameras because, again, to revitalize Lawrence Park or Highland Oaks Park, which have not been maintained in the past 10 years because the county does not have a park commission like the city does. It's just in decay. And it will cost between $300,000 and $500,000 for revitalizing that park. So I just, you know, would like the commission to vote this positively because all I'm doing is just reallocating the funds that everyone else has already spent. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Sugarman. Seeing no one on the screen here, we can prepare this item for a vote. Okay, we can close the screen and record the vote. Okay, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Wright, Thornton, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have four eye votes.
Okay. All right, that item will go down with a favorable recommendation. This will conclude budget and finance.
All right, good morning. We will now call to order Committee 10, General Government. Madam Parliamentarian, please read the first item.
Item one is a resolution approving the election of notaries public for appointment and a reappointment for Shelby County, Tennessee, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
All right, that item has been moved by Commissioner Wright and seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. There are seeing no members in the queue. We will move to the question. If Madam Clerk, please prepare the board for the vote. I will say that the county attorney's office did not find any commitments. I'm almost forgetting to vote. Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Wright, Thornton, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have five eye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, item number two.
Item two is a resolution approving the county mayor's nomination of Raj Kurapati for appointment to the Shelby County Healthcare Corporation, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
Thank you, Madam Parliamentarian. Let's get this item properly before us. It's been moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Wright. Okay, Mr. Massey, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. Corey Massey, Special Assistant, Shelby County Mayor's Office. I'm here to present the mayor's nomination for appointment for Raj Kurapati for appointment to the Shelby County Care Corporation Board. The Shelby County Healthcare Corporation Board ensures that adequate resources are allocated to the, for the delivery of quality care and services, as well as stewardship and safeguarding of the organization's mission. The governing body is responsible for maintaining high-quality patient care and holds the senior leadership team accountable for providing such care and achievement performance goals that improve the community's health status. Mr. Raj is a seasoned executive with a strong background in public sector finance and health-related institutions. Mr. Raj is very well-known to the business and academic communities of Memphis, having previously served between 2018 and 2023 as Chief Operating and Financial Officer for the University of Memphis. At the University of Tennessee Health Science Center, he is currently the Executive Vice-Chancellor and Chief Operation Officer. He has served on the president's cabinet overseeing all financial and personnel matters, managing audits, and guiding strategic fiscal policies across the system. With deep experience in governance and compliance and institutional strategy, Mr. Raj is exceptionally qualified to serve for the Shelby County Healthcare Corporation Board, bringing added value to this much-needed board. At this time, I would like to give Mr. Kurapati an opportunity to address the board and to answer any questions that you may have.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come and visit with you this morning. I am honored to be nominated for this position, and I believe that I have the prerequisite experience and understanding of what the role requires to be able to serve in this capacity and add value to the board of the Healthcare Corporation. And I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm happy to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Kurapati, for offering your candidacy. I asked the same question of a previous nominee, and just wanted to just convey to you, especially with your finance background, that there's an issue that Region 1 is having with expending dollars with minorities. And so in the unrestricted funds category, we spend about 2%. And so it's been unclear to me what governs that spend, but I just want to put on notice for any of these new appointments, that you would go in and that you would ask the questions and probe in that area. And so I would just like to hear comment of any type of shared understanding or sentiments that you have about why we should increase this figure, particularly because Shelby County is a majority-minority county, and we need to circulate the dollars.
Thank you for that question, ma'am. You know, previously, I served as Executive Vice President, Chief Operating Officer, and Chief Financial Officer at the University of Memphis. During, in that role, I oversaw procurement at the University of Memphis. One of the things that we did at the University was, at Memphis, was to increase our spend when it came to using our minority-owned businesses in Shelby County and around the state. I believe that we should be committed to empowering our local businesses to do better and contribute to the state's economy. Small businesses are the drivers behind our economy, the primary drivers behind our economy, and I'm committed to making sure that we do everything we can to provide opportunities for our local businesses and minority-owned businesses to participate in every opportunity to provide services to the healthcare corporation and across my span of opportunity to do so.
Thank you so much. I hope to see you be a champion for that cause. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thornton. Seeing no other members in the queue, we will move to the question. Madam Clerk, please prepare the board. Every member voted.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Wright, Bradford, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have five eye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Sarah, for your willingness to serve.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Madam Parliamentarian, we will move to item number three.
Item three is a resolution reappointing Will Frazier as the chairman to the Shelby County Beer Board and appointing Will Richardson as the vice chairman to the Shelby County Beer Board, sponsored by Commissioner Mick Wright.
Okay, that item has been moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Wright. Seeing no members, Commissioner Wright, did you want to make comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. If you don't mind, thank you. Just wanted to state again, as it says, this is a reappointment for the chair. He is the current chair, but his term as chair has lapsed, so we just need to reappoint that. And then on the vice chair, we just had not named anyone, and so we're naming a current member of the Beer Board as a vice chair. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. All right, seeing no other members in the queue, no further discussion. We will move to the question. Madam Clerk, please prepare the board for the vote. Every member cast your vote. Any member deciding to change your vote? Madam Clerk, maybe have the tally.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Wright, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have four eye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, next item, please.
Item four is an ordinance third reading, ordinance amending the Shelby County Charter to amend one, Article 5, Section 5.08, Conflicts of Interest, two, Article 5, Section 5.24, Recall of Elected County Officers, and three, Article 6, Section 6.02, County Board of Education, sponsored by Chairman Michael Whaley.
Okay, thank you. This item has been moved by Commissioner Sugarman and seconded by Chairman Whaley. Chairman Whaley, you're recognized.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to move to refer this item and the next one to April 30th.
Okay, this item has been moved, and I'll second it. Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded to be deferred to April 30th. Can we do that without objection? So moved. All right, that will apply to item, well, Parliamentarian will have to read the next item into the record.
Yes, ma'am. Item five is an ordinance third reading, ordinance to amend the Shelby County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Article 2, Code of Ethics, to ensure county ethical provisions are applied consistently and more closely aligned with the charter and state law, sponsored by Chairman Michael Whaley.
All right, as previously stated, this item, I guess we'll need to get it moved by Commissioner Whaley, seconded by Commissioner Wright, to refer this item to April 30th.
Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. I'm going to move to also refer this to April 30th.
Right, I just said that.
All right, sorry.
Can we do that without objection? So.
I don't have a second.
Commissioner Wright, did you second that?
Sure.
Commissioner Wright seconded. Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Parliamentarian, item number six.
Item six is an ordinance third reading, ordinance approving and setting the salary for the Board of County Commissioners for Shelby County, Tennessee, for the 2026-2030 Term of Office to account for inflation effective after the August 2026 elections, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman.
All right, this item has been moved by Commissioner Sugarman and seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Sugarman, you're recognized.
Yes, I just want to say for the record, I know some of my colleagues say that this is a part-time job, but it is no way a part-time job. I'm available 24/7. I work seven days a week. But having said that, this would not apply to this Board of Commission, but the next elected Board of Commissioners, 6% increase is, you know, attainable and reasonable increase for the next Board of Commissioners. You know, when I go and go to the grocery store on occasion, I'm just wondering how, you know, people are able to make it, just like the next item, the sheriff, you know, wants an increase. And again, that will go applicable to the next sheriff, whoever that is who the voters vote. And so I just, you know, urge my colleagues to consider, you know, giving the next Board of Commissioners a pay increase, and it's very reasonable, considering the amount of time that some of us work. In fact, one of my colleagues, you know, has been allegedly, have known to spend the night up here. So I just say, we do work very, very hard for our constituents and for the people of Shelby County. So I urge support in this ordinance. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. All right, Commissioner, are you back? You can, okay. Seeing no other members in the queue, we will move to the question. Madam Clerk, please, please prepare the board for the vote. Every member deciding to vote, please cast your vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman and Thornton. Commissioner Wright has voted no. Commissioner Brooks has abstained. We have two ayes, one no, one abstained.
Madam Clerk, that item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, next item, please.
Yes, ma'am. Item seven is an ordinance second reading, ordinance approving and setting the salary of the Shelby County Sheriff for the 2026 through 2030 Term of Office, sponsored by Commissioner Dr. Edmund Ford Jr. This item was deferred in March 26, 2025 committee meeting.
This item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman and seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that Ms. Odell got everybody the information, again, that I already gave everybody concerning this particular item. Again, this item is to set the incoming sheriff for 2026, September 1st, at a salary of $235,000. In the last committee, I showed where at least two other sheriffs with smaller populations, as well as Chief CJ Davis and one other individual make significantly more than the actual sheriff now. The 235, even though it's going to be lower than some of those individuals, at least it will line up with what the salary will be or possibly could be for the purposes of making sure that it does not unalign itself for the next term. We're only allowed to do this one time. This does require nine votes. I would also say that if there is no increase, there is a high possibility that either mayor appointees or sheriff deputy chiefs could have a salary higher than the $199,500 that the sheriff makes now. So 235 is also the number that the Sheriff Deputy Association has also endorsed. So if there aren't any questions, I'm not going to hold the item anymore. I'll go ahead and take any questions if any Commissioners have any questions regarding that 235 number. And again, this will require nine votes for the purposes of increasing any salaries, and I yield.
Seeing no other members in the queue, we will go to the question. Madam Clerk, please give us the tally.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Ford, Wright, Thornton, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioner Brooks has abstained. We have five ayes and one abstained.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, please read item number eight.
Item eight is a resolution to enhance the accessibility of digital assets throughout Shelby County government by recommending the adoption of a uniform website domain name standard, sponsored by Commissioner Mick Wright.
All right, this item has been moved by Chairman Whaley and seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Wright, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is something that just came to my attention over the last couple weeks, again, of speaking with constituents and also with our ITS department. I see Chief Perry is here with us. We have throughout county government a variety of different kinds of website domain names, not only what the address is, but how Shelby County, the word Shelby County is treated, but also the top-level domain. So what I mean by that is the .org or .com, .gov. We have all of the above, nine .coms, we have three .orgs, we have two .goves, we have one.us. And so just in looking through all the various websites that we have throughout the county and getting a chance to speak with Chief Perry, it seems to me that we could improve our digital footprint throughout the county by coming up with a shared standard. So this resolution asks all departments to kind of collaborate together with ITS to come up with that standard, and in particular, as they foresee redoing the website. So our flagship website, shelbycountytn.gov, will be redone, and we badly needed that redesign. But that gives us an opportunity here in the next little bit to kind of rethink the properties that we have throughout the county. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Is Ms. Perry here? Ms. Perry, could you come up, please?
Good morning. I guess my concern, curiosity, if you will, just curious as to your comments about a uniform website domain, the upside, the downside, and what we need to look out for.
Good morning, Sandra Perry, CIO, Information Technology Services. In working with Commissioner Wright, as he spoke to, having consistency and having a uniform website naming standard. The benefit of that is we are government and we should represent and be seen as that. So when we have standardization in our naming convention, when our constituents and our public does a query and a search across the internet, it is easier for them to find the sustainability and continuity of everything being under the umbrella of Shelby County government. Having Shelby County Government TN.gov is a historical adoption that was done several years ago for uniformity. And now that there is a ADA compliance, we are in the throes in an assessment of creating a new website for ShelbyCountyTN.gov because we have to become ADA compliant. So here's an opportunity for all of us, under the naming convention of ShelbyCountyTN.gov, to be represented as a uniform government.
Well, I'm sure that, you know, whatever committee you form to do this will work out all of the, you know, the logistics, details, and so forth. I can't imagine, well, I can't imagine the cost. Do you have a ballpark?
We have actually put out a RFP, which is going to come at a later date, and we've seen pricing range from a minimal, minimal amount of enhancements in a ballpark of 150,000 all the way up to more than we would even imagine to redo a website. So what we're looking at is what we have proposed from a budgetary as to what we should vet in the industry. So we do have a ballpark. So the ballpark is at a minimum in the lower hundred thousands, all the way up to exceeding, we'll say, 800,000.
Okay, okay. All right, well, we'll look forward to you keeping us updated on what's going on. Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to be added as a sponsor.
Second.
All right, can we do that without objection? So moved, can we do that without objection? Commissioner Thornton has been added as a sponsor.
Thank you, Chair. And just to Chief Perry, so this particular resolution allows you to start the process of inquiry to be able to resolve this issue, correct?
Sandra Perry, CIO. Yes, Commissioner, it will allow us to further develop with the different elected officials and offices under Shelby County government to create that standard and that uniformity that we're seeking.
So will the meetings be convened through the I T Steering Committee?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if you could just share those meeting dates when they're, when they're held, so that if any of us would like to attend, then we could be present.
Yes, that can be done.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Thornton. Seeing no other members in the queue, we will move to the question. Madam Clerk, please prepare the board for the vote. Okay. Okay, okay. My committee, okay. Madam Clerk, do we have a tally? I'm sorry. Every member voted, please cast your vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Wright, Thornton, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have five eye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, please read item number nine.
Item nine is a resolution requesting county officials collaborate with information technology I T services to explore and adopt artificial intelligence AI applications and to develop guidelines for AI implementation in order to improve productivity, decrease costs, and enhance service offerings throughout Shelby County government. Sponsored by Commissioner Mick Wright.
This item has been moved by Chairman Whaley and seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Wright, you're recognized.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. And this is another issue that I've had discussion with I T S about and something that I was asking throughout the, some of the budget meetings that we've had, just to ask throughout county government, which departments are able to kind of expand their services or enhance some of our offerings using some of these new tools that are available under the artificial intelligence umbrella? When I say that, I know a lot of, you know, kind of in-users will use, probably a lot of people have heard of Chat GTP or whatever that's called. People have used a lot of these on, you know, again, just in-users using them for pictures or videos. I've even seen there's one called Google LLM or Notebook LLM, something like that by Google, that will, you can upload a document and it'll spit out a, it'll, it will create a podcast for you based on documents. It's really wild, some of the, the tools that are now available. And so this is, again, just sort of a request to county government, throughout county government, to start looking at those tools and services that are offered to kind of move us down, down the field. I did see as I was reviewing this issue, our school system already has a policy related to this. And the other half of this is, is asking those departments and those leaders throughout county government to check with I T S because we, there may also be some ethical concerns or some data security concerns enrolling out these kinds of services that we really should lean on our I T professionals to, to kind of inform that process.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. And I agree with you on that. I've seen so many of those AI products, and it's amazing the different kinds of things. I mean, that, the shortcuts that they take in terms of, I guess, my experience would be pre-internet. So, but I, I guess my concern would be also, you know, what, what would, what are we losing? Or are we losing anything when it comes to education? When we take those shortcuts, and even though it's needed for, you know, productivity and efficiency, but when it comes to the school system? Ms. Perry, I'm trying to find the words. Do, do you see what we may be losing, our children may be missing something? Can you help me articulate what I'm thinking?
Sandra Perry, CIO, Information Technology Services. Commissioner Brooks, you, I, I understand the question because your concern is about students retaining the ability to learn and think.
To think, that right.
To learn and think. All technology, when used in its proper form, creates value. When used in its proper form. It, AI, it's an emerging technology. It is there to enhance your learning, your productivity, things of that nature. It is there to create value when a proper framework is built around it. And that is what Commissioner Wright is seeking in this resolution, for us to create and build out that framework based on industry best practices, based on the security around it, based on the ethical implementations, implications of using it, excuse me. So all of those things, when, in a perfect world, it has value in the perfect world. So our goal is to definitely use it as a value-added tool, but to build out a framework because you have everything from plagiarism. So all of those, you have the security implications because it can impersonate. So you want to do it in a framework where it creates the value and it brings the positivity to your environment, so.
Thank you, well said. And it sounds like we almost need to have a police depart, AI police department. Commissioner Ford.
Good morning. Is there any current legislation, not necessarily Tennessee legislation, that assists in what you're trying to do here with this resolution? I know technology and legislation, legislation always has to catch up because technology's always changing. So to your knowledge, is there any legislation, not necessarily Tennessee legislation, that is on the books, that gives some type of guidance and is passed to help you with this resolution?
Sandra Perry, CIO. All of the information from a county lens that we have been vetting and looking at has come through NACO. NACO has created guidelines. They are working with all the counties. They do webinars. And at all of their conferences, there are targeted AI. So they've built out a really good roadmap for any county to adopt and modify specific to their organization.
And that's great as a foundation, but to your knowledge, has any of that foundation turned into actual legislation?
I am not aware of it in Tennessee, but I do know some of the other counties have made legislation. Even the state of New York was the latest that I read about. So they are moving forward with legislation to govern it.
And can you just send me some of that via email so I can look at what we have, what they have, rather?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, IU.
Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chief Perry, and to the sponsor for bringing this. So when the chair was talking about where she fares in terms of technology, like I'm on the other side of the spectrum, and so I am excited to see what this resolution could look like as implemented. So can you, I mean, it seems like a big open request to the county officials for them to opt in. What does it look like to streamline a review of what AI implications could look like in each of the respective departments? Like, how can we give this resolution teeth is really the question?
Sandra Perry, CIO. This resolution, like I say, it has multiple, to me, paths and opportunities. First, you set a framework. And then you take a look at use cases and you build use cases. That's something we're doing within, internally within I T S. We're looking at what we do day-to-day. How can we gain efficiency in that? So you would probably, some people start large. They use it, we'll talk about Chat GPT or Copilot. The area that we use it in day-to-day, Grammarly is the biggest thing that we are now seeing being used because from a security standpoint, we are monitoring. We have been monitoring for over a year now. It's being used throughout the county. The biggest area where we see people using it, when we are writing emails, when we're proposing memos, we go out to Grammarly and say, check my grammar, give me a better option to say what I want to say. That has been the vast use. Some of the other opportunities, you can have it where it does, like our service desk, we can actually have a AI agent that's funneling calls, that's helping us to be more responsive in our call resolution time. So those are some small ones from an AI lens. There are other organizations that have had sessions with us. They're looking at it to be more focused on the community, being able to help them get answers to all things that has to do with services, for example, in the county. Instead of having to have a physical body, you now free that, that body up to do more value-added targeted work because you've got AI assistance that's answering questions for the constituents and the community.
And when we talk about the previous resolution and an interest in looking at streamlining our domains and just website functions, will AI come into that particular process as we're scoping out the services that we're looking to solicit?
There is a possibility and opportunity there. And for example, when you pull up a website or when you go to certain online, you see that little bot that comes down in the bottom that says, hey, can I help you? Can I guide you? Can I be of service? All of those are opportunities for the county to become more digital to the constituents and how we serve them.
Thank you. I'm back in queue.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so I love this, but as you stated, there needs to be framework. For example, with my students, I teach 12th graders how to write research papers and things of that nature in social studies. And so, you know, they use AI. However, it's the caveat with finding sources, an outline, but not using it to write their research papers. And they are understand, they understand that if they plagiarize or use AI, because I checked through Grammarly, that would be a zero. And so there needs to be boundaries and a framework. And so I'm glad that you're looking at that. So my first question is, so what is the timeframe for that framework and what would it look like? And then the other thing is, you know, I had mentioned to our chief of staff here and about getting Grammarly for our staff and, you know, the issue is, you know, license. It's very expensive. And so the, the question then becomes, is the county looking for maybe getting a license that could cover all the divisions or is that still going to have to be done by division by division? Last, I would like to be added as a sponsor.
Commissioner Sugarman has moved to be added as a sponsor. It's been seconded by Commissioner Wright. Can we do that without objection? So moved.
Sandra Perry, CIO. Thank you for those questions, Commissioner Sugarman. To that regard, looking at, we'll take Grammarly, that's the first one. My team has brought it to me because that is where we see the widespread use right now for AI-type technology. We have not looked deeper into that from a cost perspective. It was just brought up. The second part of the governing and the framework, I have a member on my team that has been tasked this last several months of exploring all things AI that has a draft governing policy. But until we get before the I T Steering Committee and all of those committees to have it vetted and learn more from the industry, we have not moved forward with that of making it become a live document for Shelby County adoption.
A follow-up question real quickly. And so as far as timeframe, do you think that might be next year, three years down the line? I'm just very curious because there is a need, especially when you have so many constituents who having a hard time navigating our, you know, websites as far, as far as finding services. So do you have an idea or?
Sandra Perry, CIO. As far as the website, the website is on schedule to happen in the next probably 12 to 18 months. We've gone out, we've vetted the market, and now we're moving forward with the actual procurements of having a new website. So that undertaking, we're looking at doing it in under 12 months for the website. The other piece of that for all of the governing and adoption of the whole AI, that's more of a starting now, moving into probably a longer term of building it out, working with all the different departments in Shelby County government. So I can't put a definite timeline on that, but that's more of a long year, probably maybe a 24 window, month window of having something that we're actually realizing.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Thornton, you're back in queue.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to be added as a sponsor.
Okay. Commissioner Thornton has moved to be added as the sponsor, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. Can we do that without objection? So moved.
Thank you. Thank you for receiving these questions, Chief Perry. It's exciting to see where this can go. My question was more so about, I literally lost it. If only I had XAI to help me in this role as a commissioner. Once this is passed, it seems like you're taking ownership of it, your office, is that correct?
Sandra Perry, CIO. Yes, we will be doing it on behalf of Shelby County government under the workings and cooperation and partnering with our I T Steering Committee, which will represent all which will represent all of the different agencies under the umbrella of Shelby County Government.
I've seen you at a number of conferences, and I know that you are like very much so an active participant. Have you seen any other county that we could maybe lift up as an exemplar? Who's done a great job of trailblazing in this area?
Sandra Perry, CIO. And yes, you're correct. Most of those are demoed through the IT CIO for NACO. So, I don't have any top of mind, but I can definitely share some of that with you.
That would be helpful, just in case we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. If someone has stepped out to be able to show a best practice, then it would be great to just bring it to implement. Maybe that'll expedite the 24-month timeframe, which I know a number of us, there's going to be huge turnover. So, including with the administration, just wanted to make sure that we set something in motion that can actually be sustained. And I'm just curious specifically, as you're probing and consolidating information, how do we use XAI to increase our efficiency and cost savings? So, like really using XAI, particularly during the budget process? Like, what would that look like to overlay, you know, that tool with that process to be able to increase some of the lost dollars that we aren't really thinking about? Or just presenting new areas of opportunity for us to be able to consolidate or condense or any of those words that might free up some dollars for us to reinvest in more strategic ways?
Sandra Perry, CIO. That is definitely, I'll use the term an open-ended opportunity because it could take so many different paths. You start by looking at, how am I doing my businesses today? What are the missed opportunities? And then, I look for that solution that may exist to get me there faster. That will be, so to speak, a fast track. Technology is evolving daily. AI right now is an emerging trend, as we call it. You've got machine learning. When you talk about some of the things that you're referencing, that could fall under the umbrella of machine learning, which means that here's what I know I want to achieve. I just don't know how to get started. And AI can vet the market for you. It can do that research to tell you who are your top players in the game, different things like that. Or I have a process. I would like for this process that I've been doing multiple-plus years to be re-engineered. Well, AI can play a role in helping you do that. It literally, and when you speak to XAI, I've seen presentations on that. Opportunities there where was presented to me in this particular presentation, research that takes 24, 36-plus months to do can be done in almost seconds today's now. That's the gain of when it's used in its proper context, where you can see the value of it.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Just two more things. Are we monitoring this for, or looking at this through elimination of jobs kind of lens? And, well, I mean, I know we don't want to eliminate jobs, but they are unintended consequences of all kinds of things. So, we are aware of that, right?
Sandra Perry, CIO. I never look at tech, knowledge, as an option for eliminating jobs because the technology is only as good as the people that are using the technology. Does it enhance the workforce? Does it allow an opportunity to retool and reskill your workforce? Absolutely. There are times in the realistic world where there has to be a trade-off. So, you have to find that balance.
Okay. And when I heard you talking about service desk attendant, it immediately came to mind that, you know, we would use, you know, AI as opposed to a person actually handling the service desk inquiries.
Sandra Perry, CIO. And what that brings, that creates value. There are times-
But that eliminates an individual.
No, it actually, the way in which you look at it, let's say right now I have staffing challenges where I'm not able to get the people. I augment my staffing with the technology. So, that's where it creates the value for it in a situation like that. Or let's say my response time, it has a user on hold for 15 minutes. Well, if I'm augmenting that with AI technology, that decreases that response time. It could cut it in half. So, that's where we look at augmenting and using technology to create the value.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Seeing all the members in the queue, we will move to the question. I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll move to the question. Every member, designed to vote, please cast your vote. Every member voted? Madam Clerk, may we have a tally?
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have eight eye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That item goes down with favorable recommendation. That will formally conclude.
I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Okay. And let the Chair speak for a minute before you recognize. Commissioner Sugarman, you've given us two add-ons that have not gone through the process. And I would prefer that they go through the process before they're heard in general government. You recognize.
Thank you. I'll move to suspend the rules to bring my add-ons. This first add-on was, worked on two or three months ago, and Chief Perry asked me to wait on this. And so, I don't know why. As you know, we do have a new employee. And the other one is add-on. And as far as time, I know there are other commissioners who, I know the add-ons first, who brought in add-ons after the first, and they're added. And again, this is another way to stop my resolutions to be getting on the agenda. And I would like to be treated just like my colleagues, that if I cannot get them on the agenda, that I'd like to be allowed to bring them as an add-on. So, I move to suspend the rules to bring my add-ons.
Commissioner Sugarman has moved to suspend the rules.
I have a point of information.
I'm sorry. Just to my, Madam Parliamentarian, you will recognize. My apologies.
Thank you. The add-on rule at committees is a committee chair may allow an item to be added to the agenda of the committee if there's no objection. If there is no objection, such item shall be designated as an add-on item in the agenda. If there is an objection, such item may only be added by suspension of these rules in accordance with Rule 27. The chair of the county commission may then overrule the addition of items during committee meetings, but such overruling shall be subject to appeal in accordance with Rule 4A. So, one, if the committee chair is allowing this item, then that can be done with that objection. However, if there's an objection, then it will be proper to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you, Madam Parliamentarian.
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
I will recognize you. When I get, I didn't recognize you, Mr. Ford.
I didn't say anything to you. Let's not do that today. You don't want it.
You recognize. Go ahead.
Also, thank you. So, my parliamentary inquiry is a reiteration of what the parliamentarian said. So, you're saying that the motion to suspend the rules, if there's a second, it needs basically two-thirds? But are you saying after the two-thirds, the Chair right here can override that? I just want to make sure that you said the right thing, well, clarity purposes.
So, the rules indicate, I'll read it again. A committee chair may allow an item to be added to the agenda of the committee without objection.
Right.
Okay.
And if we just suspend the rules, then it's done, right? It'll be on.
Then, there is a second opportunity for the chair of the county commission to overrule that decision. But such overruling shall be subject to appeal in accordance with Rule 4A, which is-
Right.
The commissioners present and voting. So, two-thirds vote. Yes.
Okay. If nobody else seconded, I second the motion for suspending the rules. I believe that the commissioner stated that she's had multiple times that she's tried to get it on and hasn't been able to, but other commissioners have had the opportunity to do so. So, I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Sugarman, first of all, let me say this, point of personal privilege. I have no objections to any of your resolutions, ordinances, or what have you. But I do believe in process. I have no information in reference to, you know, the back of the room, what is going on and all of that. But I do know a process. And one of the things I do know, also, we need to keep, allow the public to have advanced information. And that's why we have the timeline on submitting documents so that they can go into the system. Then, they can be published or sunshine, and the public will have notice and have the ability to read them, understand them, contact the commissioner, or sponsor, what have you. So, you know, it's a process, my only objection is a process objection. As simple as that.
Yes, it is. That's an objection. Process objection.
May I respond?
Commissioner Thornton? Thank you, Chair. Just, I mean, to the public, I see where we're going with this. And I would just say, one of the most recent glaring decisions we made as a body that defies what Commissioner Brookshire said, was a $24 million transaction that was an add-on in commission. And so, to me, it doesn't get more egregious than that. I mean, there was no scrutiny of that particular item. And here we are today, potentially blocking what a commissioner is trying to do to get on the floor for deliberation. Going through committee is the most honorable way to be vetted. And I've seen way more substantial dollars pass through this body without any scrutiny. And so, I would hope that we would support Commissioner Sugarman's items just getting to the floor. And I also would just hope that there aren't blocks before any of our items getting to the floor that are happening, that are not being spoken of. So, I support Commissioner Sugarman's efforts, and I hope to see it passed. Thank you.
Commissioner Sugarman?
And again, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to help the audience to know that it's an ongoing issue for my resolutions and ordinances. I spend lots of times writing them. Sometimes I'm here to 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning. I take everything I bring before this commission very, very seriously. I have a 95% pass record. And so, again, just to get it on the agenda is an obstacle for me, for my district. And if we vote it up or down, that's fine. That is fine. But this should not be an ongoing thing for this commissioner. And if you look at your agenda, you notice how many committees I am on versus some of my colleagues. This is systemic. And so, again, I just want to know, I'm following the process the best I can. Having said that, even though my, I'm not going to blame my new employee at all, but even though it was one day late, I still see other divisions get their items on the record. And yes, I agree with the Chair. It should be upboarded so that the public can see. But if it's the only route I can take, I will take it. I, but I'm raised to fight. I will fight for everything that I bring before you. I stand on my voting record. I stand on the resolutions that I bring forward. I stand on the ordinances to help disadvantaged, marginalized people in our communities. Thank you.
On this procedural vote, there are eight members present. So, we'll require six for the suspension of the rules to pass.
All right. You've heard the announcement from the parliamentarian. We'll now move to the vote. Madam Clerk, we are voting on the suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk, every member voted?
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, and Thornton. We have five eye votes.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. That, the rule will be, rules will be suspended. Was that it? Oh, the item fails. We'll go back to the main motion. Okay, so we will not add on. Thank you, Ma'am. Will you clarify for the record, Madam Parliamentarian?
So, the rule for add-ons, when there was an objection to the item being added on, there was objection, so it required a suspension of the rules. Because you had eight members present and voting, you required six for there's to be a two-thirds of those present and voting to suspend the rules. There were five, so the motion did not pass.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Parliamentarian.
Point of order. And I just read the rule real quick. Oh, and I recognize, I don't, well, I said point of order.
You're out of order, but you'll recognize out of order.
Well, with a point of order, I'm supposed to be recognized first, Madam Chair. So, to the parliamentarian, if you had three people sitting in that chair and not vote, and it said present and voting, and they didn't do the and voting part, does that still apply?
No, that changes the numbers, but I didn't see who was voting and who was not voting.
So, there was eight people in their seat, five people voted yes, three people sat in their seat and did nothing.
Is that the case?
Yes.
Evelyn? Okay. So, then, there were how many people voting?
Five.
Five.
Okay. So, then the motion passed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Parliamentarian, what is our parliamentary situation now that you have reversed, it has been reversed?
So, you're back on, and you are going to add on the item?
Okay. Item. Item number 10.
I'm sorry. That's 11.
I have it. She just passed out. This is monthly line item financial reports. This is the one she marked as 10.
We have nine items, so the item 10 would be the add-on item.
Yes.
Okay. Does, does, so, it's not in your system that way?
No, it's not.
I guess this is why we want to have some procedure.
Parliamentarian, so the number 10 would be the add-on inherited General Government Committee, and it's a resolution requiring the Chief Administrator of the Board of Shelby County Commissioners to provide monthly line item financial reports to the Board of Shelby County Commissioners.
Unfortunately, because there's been no proper process, the Minutes Clerk, you passed out several add-on items, or some substitute, no, several. And so, didn't have any direction from the Committee Chair. Evelyn loaded, already loaded some items into the system.
None of mine have been loaded up to the system.
Well, when they were passed out to her, in order for her to be prepared, she has to put in the system so we can vote on it. So, I don't know, what, what do you want to do? I think your colleagues might want a copy of the item.
All right, I'll tell you what, Madam Parliamentarian, is it okay to take a brief recess while we get this in order?
Go ahead and use it, the number, I don't care. I'll change the number.
Okay, we'll just take a couple of minute recess.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to change.
Okay, Madam Parliamentarian, I think the clerk is ready. We'll go ahead and read the caption for item number 10, previously called 12.
Is it the Chief Administrator one?
This is the resolution requiring the Chief Administrator, right, right, right.
Item 10 is an add-on item. Item 10 is a resolution requiring the Chief Administrator of the Board of Shelby County Commissioners to provide monthly line item financial reports to the Board of Shelby County Commissioners, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman.
Thank you, Madam Parliamentarian. This item has been moved by Commissioner Sugarman and seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, as you all may know or remember, the Comptroller's Office sent a letter to the Commissioners stating that the Finance Division provide a line item budget. And so, with accountability and transparency, we would like our own office to do the same thing for transparency and accountability purposes. For example, I have asked the Chief Perry to provide me with financial statements. And in fact, you know, I had to go before and ask for a FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, just to get our financial reporting. And so, again, I am not throwing disparaging comments to anybody, my colleagues, the staff, or anything. We just want accountability and transparency, so that we know where the dollars are spent. And then, if there's money left over, for example, the unspent funds are going back to the General Fund. And so, I think all the Commissioners should have this opportunity to see the financial reporting, so that when we're called out by the public, we can say, this is how we spent our money. This is what we did. And we can be accountable to the public, but right now, I don't know how the money's being spent, to be honest. I'm going to keep asking, what are the balances for this fund, that fund? You know, we should know exactly the dollar amount that we are spending ourselves. And so, this is for all the Commissioners to receive monthly reporting. And so, again, I hear the public, and you want transparency, you want accountability. And with this resolution, this affords us as Commissioners, because according to our charter, we are responsible. The buck stops here. Thank you.
Okay, let's see, Commissioner Thorpe.
I rise in favor of this item. I have seen things from the past through a FOIA request that previous chairpersons have been able to get done within our budget. And some of those things, I'm like, how in the world did this get signed off on? But it may, it may have been something that they needed in their district, but you know, hey, $26,000 Christmas trees and some other things, I'm like, okay. I have never asked for a $26,000 Christmas tree in my district, just for the record. But if you are one of the 13, all you should have to do is make a request, and it should be done. I believe my colleagues had to make numerous FOIA requests just to get something that's located behind that wall right there. If that's something that you can't get, heaven forbid you try to get something from the 11th floor. And we talking about millions and millions of dollars over there. So, I rise in support. It's unfortunate that you have to put this add-on on just to ask, how much do we have in our own budget? That's like people saying, hey, this is my checking account, but do I have permission to either go to the bank or to go to the ATM to see what my balance is? This shouldn't even be an item that you have to bring. So, I'm going to vote in favor. But I would ask this, this sponsor, if there are any other challenges, just document everything like you always do. And I yield back. Thank you.
Commissioner Sugarman, are you back in the queue?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, seeing no other Members in the queue, we'll call a question. Let's move to the vote. Madam Clerk. Every member voted? Madam Clerk? Yes, ma'am.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Ford, Wright, and Thornton. Commissioner Brooks has abstained. We have four eyes, one abstained.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That item goes down with a favorable recommendation. And Madam Parliamentarian, do you have item number 11? Okay.
Item 11 is an add-on item. Item 11 is a resolution requesting the Chair of the Board of Shelby County Commissioners initiates the request for qualifications or single-source procurement process to engage an outside consultant to perform a comprehensive process audit for the Shelby County Commission's operations, including the County Commission, Minutes Departments, and Office of Equal Opportunity. This center requires an allocation of up to $50,000 from the County Commission's Consultant Services Fund to cover the costs, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman.
Thank you, Madam Parliamentarian. That item has been moved by Commissioner Sugarman and seconded by Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the additional add-on. And so, I just want to explain to the public the purpose of this. As you know, there are a lot of inefficiencies. I'll give you just one example. One thing that, you know, when people come to us and want support, for example, the CEP, the grants that we have, or if they want, you know, resources from the administration, for example, from the time it is approved by us and then executed by the mayor, it could take months or even years, you know, for the entities to receive their resources. And so, I just want to say, I'm going to give one example, and that was a CAPS contract. It was to support or help the individuals at Toon Poplar who had mental health issues. And so, it was signed off on in one month. It took almost a year for CAPS to receive its funding. And so, it was more than a year, actually. And so, that meant that these individuals at Toon Poplar had to languish until they received the services from CAPS, just one example. And so, again, this is not to disparage anybody or anything, but there needs to be a look at the processes, because there needs to be more efficiencies throughout the process. Another example I would give is when we had a salary, equitable salary for the employees here, and this Commission supported it. However, when it went to the mayor, it was not, he vetoed it. And so, again, when that happens, then the Commission has an opportunity to override the mayor's veto. But if we don't know that he's vetoed it, because their processes aren't there, then there's an issue. So, there needs to be, you know, processes all along the way, so that we can give the people what the services they want in a timely fashion. And so, what this idea is, is to reallocate funding that we had for the forensic audits of the Memphis Shelby County Schools. However, as the public may know, the Comptroller's Office is now funding it 100% with $3 million. And so, that $50,000 that was going to the forensic audit will be reallocated for a process audit. Thank you.
Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to be added as a sponsor.
Commissioner Thornton has moved to be added as a sponsor. It has been properly seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. Can we do that without objection? So moved.
Thank you. I just want to support the sponsor's efforts here. I commend you for being able to keep up with the $50,000 and seeing that as an opportunity to pivot. I know that you've been talking about a process audit for some time. I will just say, you know, we each have our individual experiences of how we are experiencing this role of being an elected official. And personally, for me, I still have the $2.7 million allocation that has been caught up in, you know, government process. And so, when I was told that it was being taken care of and noticed how long it was taking, which was months since it's been passed by this Commission twice, was very concerned to find out that, when I actually went to go find out where it was, the attorney that was supposed to be the receiver of it had yet to receive it and had actually overlooked the communication. So here, my allocation for my district is just sitting in government, in the abyss of someone's inbox, without there being any process that will keep track. And so, again, it's been said, these are part-time jobs. It's very unrealistic for us to do the legislative work and then go chase it down at every point in its process. And so, I would say, from my perspective, that I see that we are operating very inefficiently, and we need to be able to figure out where there are gaps in our processes. And so, again, I just think that there's room for us to improve. And to anyone that is viewing this in a negative light, I mean, evaluation is just a part of any healthy process. And so, we need to be able to figure out where it is that we're falling short. And I'll also just point out that we've had a lot of turnover within our office. And so, with each new person that's coming in, if we don't have clear processes, then it's just not the best stand for supporting the Commissioners that are trying to do this work. So, thank you again to the sponsor. I hope to see this body supported, and I also look forward to seeing what the process audit will reveal for us to address these gaps.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorpe.
Let me say this. I already mentioned one example of a Christmas tree. I've seen about a year and a half's worth of items concerning item 11. Commissioner Thornton, as far as your item, I would say, if you don't see an executed contract by June 30, that money's going back to the General Fund. And then, people are going to be asking you, well, you got an item that got passed, so what happened? So, again, June 30, and anybody that is in District 10, who lives, works, and plays in District 10, I'm letting you know right now, if there is no contract regarding an item that this body passed, commission-related item, it goes back to the General Fund, and that's what you call a pocket veto, which means District 10 will get $0. That item got passed months ago. But that's just one item compared to a lot. And then, Commissioner Thornton, I'm going to go ahead and say this on record. The contract person is also your ethics officer. That's a big conflict. And that conflict needs to be addressed, whether it's here or the Board of Professional Responsibilities. Any Chair should say they support this in order to let people know exactly how the budget is being spent. And it's a definite supplement to the item number 10. But I just wanted you to know, since you brought it up, and it has to do with this item here, you're going to do, I know everything in your power, without crossing any boundaries to make sure that the 2.7 that this body passed does not turn into a pocket veto. But I'm letting you know now that June 30, something has to be done. If it does not, that money goes back to the General Fund, most likely the fund balance, which might be some people's idea anyway. When we, I'm going to ask my colleague this, and then I'm done. When that proposed budget comes down, on behalf of your constituents, ask about that $2.7 million again. Because maybe it's baked into something else regarding wants in contrast to your district's needs. I don't need the other 20 seconds. I yield back to my colleague through the Chair.
Commissioner Thornton, did you want to go back in the queue? Are you back?
I just wanted to, just as a point of information, because I know some of my constituents have become very agitated over the $2.7 million. I'm doing my best to get it advanced. And I will just say that at this point, it's sitting with the contract's attorney and soon to be on the mayor's desk. So, it's most appropriate for constituents that are looking to receive the dollars to go ahead and make appeals to the mayor to be able to sign off on the contract. It has been months, and all I can do is the best that I can do to be able to bring resources back to a needing, a district in need. I will also just say to the Magnolia-Castilla community that they currently are scheduled to have a demo of Magnolia Elementary for June. The monies that were earmarked were to support efforts like what they are trying to get up and running, which is to organize their community to be able to fight against that anticipated demo. And so, there is a felt impact of the lack of process that will push things forward in a timely manner. And my heart goes out to the Magnolia-Castilla community, which is in need of resources, but because of poor process internally within Shelby County Government, we can't get those dollars banked and expended the way that we know that they could. So, again, to my colleagues, I do think that there's a need for this audit. I do know for sure that we are delaying particular items that could have a felt impact, and we're missing opportunities here. So, if the monies exist, they've been approved, they need to go ahead and go through the. the monies exist, they've been approved, they need to go ahead and go through the processes to be able to be banked and expended. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes general government. We, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get out of here. It just went out on a mic, didn't it? Okay, well, I own it. Madam Clerk, please prepare the board for the vote. Seeing all the members in the queue. a tally, please, ma'am.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, and Thornton. We have five eye votes.
And that item goes down with a favorable recommendation. We stand adjourned. Move to Economic and Community Development. Madam Parliament, Terian.
Item one is an ordinance, third reading, a joint ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Shelby County, Tennessee, and the Council of the City of Memphis, enacted pursuant to the Community Redevelopment Act of 1998, and the Uniformity in Tax Increment Financing Act of 2012, providing for the establishment of the Cleveland Street Corridor Redevelopment Trust Fund Ordinance, sponsored by Commissioner Mckell Lowry, Commissioner Henry E. Brooks, Commissioner Shante K. Avant, and Commissioner Brittany Thornton.
Item has been moved by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. We do have some of the applicants in the audience. Did you all want to come up and say something? I know we had a meeting, you all had a meeting on Tuesday night. Okay.
Good morning. Justin Gillis, 1276 Faxton Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38104.
Good, thank you. And you're representing?
Crosstown Memphis CDC.
Crosstown Memphis CDC. So I was at the meeting on Tuesday night, right? Okay. I'm confused now.
Monday nights, Monday night, from 6:00 to 7:00. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, whenever this week you had your meeting, I was there. And one of the questions around funding, and I think after the meeting, we talked about maybe you want to expand a little bit more on where the money's coming from and how will be expended? Any dollars?
I'm sorry.
I think there was a question in the audience that asked about funding. Right. And funding, we talked about infrastructure funding and all of that, streetscape and so forth. So I think there was some confusion, or maybe, maybe some misinformation. So if you could just say a few things about how money will be sourced.
Ah, okay. So I think one of the questions was around when they'll, when the funds will actually be there. And this is a zero-debt project where the funds will be rebuilt gradually from the increment of the taxes above and beyond where they are today. And so that fund will slowly build up, and gradually will have the funds available to actually make the infrastructure improvements within the community.
Okay. So in terms of public expenditure, what, what do you say to the work in public that's listening?
I would say that these dollars are being generated from the taxes that are collected by the city and the county. And this is just existing tax dollars that are going into a fund that, from this neighborhood, to be spent directly in this neighborhood.
Okay. Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you, Chair. I had a scheduling conflict, so I couldn't join you guys for your last meeting, but I was there in spirit. What is, when will there be projected increment for this particular TIF?
We don't expect to have increment that's really gonna be able to make impact until at least five years in.
And how much, according to your projections, will that be at that five-year mark?
According to our projections, at that five-year mark, we should be, let me look real quick. You got it quick. Okay. It's gonna be dependent on the new development that's currently in progress, but it should be, if the projects that are currently projected go forward as planned, around, it's $6 million?
Six million.
Yeah, between six and 10.
Okay. And will, I know within the Uptown TIF, they have like a single-family rehab program and maybe some other offerings. Will you have any of those factored into this particular TIF?
That's gonna be up to the Community Advisory Committee. All of the expenditures that come out of the TIF are defined by the Community Advisory Committee that works with the CRA.
So having, again, served on the CRA board, there was a lot of tension with the advisory committees and the board, because it was, in essence, a conscientious group of advisors that had no voting power. So they would come together and talk about what they would like to see, but there would be no board members present. And so there was no, you talk about process audits, there was no type of process of getting their opinions before the board to be able to support what they wanted. And there was conflict there. So have you talked to the CRA board to reconcile what that would look like, maybe expanding the scope of the board, to have a member of the CRA board be a voting member, just some type of way to be able to segue between the advisory committee and the voting body that will be voting on it?
I'm happy to have that conversation with the CRA.
Yeah. I know that we're on third read, but maybe we could jump on a call between today and Monday, just to figure that out. There has to be some type of process where what the Cleveland, what is it called, the Cleveland?
Cleveland Corridor.
The Cleveland Street Corridor Redevelopment TIF, like whatever the will of that advisory board is, it needs to be formally presented, if not having an actual voting member to the voting body, so that you can ensure that the will of your advisory board is actually executed upon. So just, I mean, I think that it's incumbent upon us to learn from other TIFs what they've done well, what they haven't, where they fell short. And so I definitely would advise your core group of leaders to figure out, like, what are some of the shortcomings of the Highland Street TIF? What are some of the shortcomings of the uptown TIF? Because again, they put a lot of intent, but what is sunsetting is oftentimes very different. And so here you are, well intentioned, and we want to make sure that your execution is very close to your intent. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so I just have a few questions. As far as a tax increment and defined, so as far as the advisory board, or whomever decides where the funds created from the increase, what have the, what has been the desire of the community as far as where they want the money, the funds spent?
So there are specific guidelines around where the funds can be spent, and that's directly on public infrastructure. And so, so far, the primary feedback that we've had is for improvements through the corridor, through the Cleveland Street Corridor, around the curb cuts, the streets gaping, the lighting, and the general safety for pedestrian and bike traffic.
Thank you. And let me just add to that. Commissioner Sugarman, were you finished? You were talking to your assistant.
Thank you. And so the other question then becomes, as far as the TIF, okay, I'm asking because of my district in Hickory Hill, they also want a TIF. So as far as the process, how long did the process take, and what did that look like?
So we started the idea of the TIF eight years ago. That period was used to do the preliminary research. We, as a, as a very small grassroots CDC, we had limited funding. And to get that study done, it took us a while to raise the money to do it. But actively working through it, it's been about, it's with the partnership of the Boulevard and the Crosstown Collaborative, it's been about two years.
Okay, next question. And so as far as the study, was it an impact study? And if so, what kind of study was completed? And then also, what was the cost of that study?
So our initial feasibility study, we did that with a, with a partner that specialized in that economic research. And I'll be happy to put you together with them. We can have a whole conversation around it. But that initial study was around, for the first pass, it was $10,000. We did adjustments that resulted in $5,000. And then at that point, once we were able to prove out the feasibility and that it worked, the overall application process expense was about $130,000.
Thank you. And because, the reason I'm asking, because I was told a lot more, like $250,000. But if you could give me in contact with your person, I would appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just one point here in reference to the advisory commission, advisory committee that is covered in the resolution that was passed May 6, 2024, under the Culturally Competent Community Engagement Guidelines. And this organization, this group, this TIF, is being conscious about following it. So just so my colleague would be advised, they have a copy of that, and we are encouraged that they will follow it to the T. And the advisory committee and their duties and implementation of all the policies are covered by that. Commissioner Thornton, you are back in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. What governs who will serve on your advisory committee?
The CRA has specific guidelines around who is on the advisory committee. I believe it has to be residents and/or business owners.
And so if, if I wanted to add the stipulation that it will be representatives from each of the neighborhood associations, that's been one of my previous questions, is to figure out how many neighborhoods are within this TIF area, and who are their represented bodies. It's my understanding the majority of the TIF area is represented by a neighborhood association. So.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's the Crosstown Community Development Corporation. That is, we have Speedway Terrace Neighborhood Association, and then the Crosstown CDC, which covers Speedway Terrace and the Crosstown District.
And so there were no more neighborhood associations, aside from those two?
No, ma'am.
Um.
There is one small strip that is evergreen. It's like six houses.
Okay. Just wanted to, when we jump on our call, figure out, like, what the CRA and this desire to have the neighborhood associations represented, what that could look like? Did you send the follow-up email with the social service agencies?
I believe so. I'll double-check. I sent a number of follow-up emails, but I do have the list of social service agencies here.
Okay. And what has your engagement been with them to figure out their input on this particular TIF?
We've worked closely with all the social services agencies to make sure they knew what the plans are, how we're moving forward, what our current progress is. And I went door-to-door last Thursday to each agency to make sure that they knew that we were moving forward, what the current status was, and make sure that they were invited to the meeting on Monday.
Who gives them a sense of how this TIF will impact their agencies? So it's one thing to be told that the TIF is moving forward. It's another to be told that with infrastructure improvements, this is going to fill vacancy and bring newfound interests. And the homeless people that you serve and the places that they occupy, they might not exist. So what, what does that look like? Because there are spaces, I mean, when I'm in this particular TIF area, there's a lot of solicitations happening from people who are clearly unhoused, whether that's at the gas station, at the corner. I mean, I've engaged with a lot of people who are just out and about. And so when you're improving the infrastructure here, you're going to change the dynamic within that TIF. You can just look to the Uptown TIF for that particular reality. There are parts of the Uptown TIF where there were concentrated development, that neighborhood people, you know, they would stand out like a sore thumb in those particular areas. And so on one hand, it's great to bring new industry. On the other hand, there's this question of if there'll be displacement, or how will that change the norms of people who currently are just inhabitants of this particular area?
Charles Monger, 70 North Bellevue, 38104. Mississippi Boulevard is still committed to that neighborhood. We're not moving. You know, we're gonna still be the continued staple there, feeding, clothing, doing all the continuous resources we do on a daily basis, as well as a monthly basis. So nothing, from our perspective, changes in how we do it. The church is committed there. We're going to continue to establish there. So we are still in the neighborhood, still doing the exact same things we were doing prior to.
Yeah. If I may, Chair.
Have it.
So it's my understanding that, of course, Mississippi Boulevard, you've continued to be a part of the conversation. I'm more so questioning the social service agencies that haven't represented themselves, like Catholic Charities. I'm pretty sure there's a Christ Community connection to this particular area, the satellite location for the homeless persons within the Christ Community Network, that Jefferson location is the one where homeless people are supposed to go to. And so those social service agencies are the ones that I'm talking about.
So they've all been informed that the TIF is in progress. They've all been included in the conversations around the proposed improvements of what the TIF could do from the infrastructure perspective. In all those conversations, there's never been any conversation around these organizations leaving the community, changes to the fabric of the community. One of the key things that we're focused on with the TIF is to be inclusive and to maintain the integrity and fabric of our neighborhoods.
So on your advisory board, I would love for it to explicitly be mentioned that you would have representation from social service agencies that are not direct residents. So because this particular TIF is home to so many persons outside of your TIF area, you know, if you just have a stipulation for existing businesses and existing residents, then you could potentially disenfranchise the people who come to your TIF area for services. You know, no fault of their own, Catholic Charities is within this district. It's serving the city and the county, really, when it comes to homeless persons. And so there are very few shortlisted resources that people have access to. If you have a homeless need, you're calling on the hub, you're calling on Catholic Charities. So you're getting people from all over, and they're not residents, and they don't plan to be residents. But where they access their services is within the TIF. And so someone who provides services to them needs to be at the conversation of what it looks like to build up this infrastructure to meet the needs of all the guests that you have coming in and out of this particular TIF area. That's the point that I'm just trying to make. Y'all have a lot of varied interests. And personally, because I have to make referrals to your TIF area all the time, I want to make sure that you hold space for the people who are coming in and out, and that they get to, down at the most foundational level, be able to have input about what it looks like to be able to be a guest in your TIF.
Absolutely. And not a problem at all.
Just say your name for me, your name.
Sorry. Justin Gillis. And absolutely, that's. And absolutely, that shouldn't be an issue at all. We have included Catholic Charities every step of the way in this process. They've been aware and made, we've made sure that they know, have known everything that's going on throughout, throughout this process. So that should not be an issue.
And just to point a personal privilege, I will say, because I am on this, and the reason I'm on it is because I find this is one of the better tips. I mean, we've had some bad actors in the past. I won't say bad actors, but I mean, some actors who didn't follow most of the community engagement guidelines. And when we, and when I say community engagement, we, I'm including all of the stakeholders, businesses, organizations, all entities within the boundary of that TIF. So one of the things that's refreshing and encouraging about this TIF is that it has reached out to the community, or the communities and stakeholders within the boundaries of the, of the TIF. And we, we certainly want to ensure that, you know, as we find more, we bring them to the table, okay? Seeing no other members in the queue, we'll call the question. Madam Clerk, let's go to the votes. Where? Well, you know, I can't see it over there. Thank you. All right, my apologies. Ms. Brandy?
Good morning.
You give us your name and your address.
Hello, good morning. My name is Brandy Price at 6571 Stockport Cove at 38141. I just want to make a quick remark. As someone who's worked in Crosstown Concord and that, around that area, I'm very well aware that one of the people that we're here about today, the people here, his brother, Elon, Elon Musk and his brother, his brother Kimball Musk also has investment in Crosstown Concord. And I, I honestly don't believe that any business that has billionaires back in it deserve or need a TIF, especially billionaires who are sympathetic to Nazism and fascist regimes. So Kimball Musk is not as famous as his brother, but those are the people that are the most dangerous, the people you don't even hear about, the people you don't even know about. So that's something I want to bring to y'all's attention today. Anything involving the Musk family, which includes Crosstown, because they are businesses who had businesses with Elon Musk's brother, Kimball Musk, who is known for breaking up unions and sabotaging local community gatherings and funds. So just letting y'all know that, I don't need the rest of my time, essentially. So no to Nazis, no to fascism. And I'm willing to fight for it in court. Anything that adheres to this ideology, I'm willing to fight for it in the courtroom. I'm already filed a default judgment against the City of Memphis for illegal, illegal actions, and I'm willing to go to court again. So there you go. No to Nazis and no to Elon.
Thank you.
Or Kimball. There you go, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. We don't do that here. Thank you. Seeing no other members, did you all want to make some additional comments? If not, we're seeing no other members in the queue, we will go to the vote. Madam Clerk? Every member voted. Madam Clerk? We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Ford, Thornton, and Brooks. We have four eye votes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with the favorable recommendation. Madam Parliament, your next item.
Item two is a discussion item to last approximately 15 minutes. Bevo, Marvin Stockwell, co-founder, presenting.
Good afternoon. Would it be okay if our?
Just a minute.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Thank you. Okay. Need another chair, just pull that chair.
Sorry, yeah, no, good afternoon. If, if it's okay with you all, first of all, thank, thank you all for having us here to present about Bevo, Baron Von Operbein, and the River of Time. These are my co-founders, Christopher Reyes, Catherine Hicks, and Ruben Brunson. And if it's okay, I'd like, I'd like to turn the, the mic over to co-founder Christopher Reyes. First, he came up with this idea originally and did a pop-up in 2020. I believe I, there, I brought in some handouts, so hopefully we can get connected to the, the technology here shortly, and it'll be on screen. But I want to thank Commissioner Lowry for, for reaching out to us and all of you for, for your time this morning. I'll just, and we need to read our, our names and addresses into the record, is that right?
Yes, when, when you get ready to speak.
Okay. Marvin Stockwell, 123 Barnett Place in Memphis, 38111.
Catherine Hicks, 970 Renz Rus Circle, 38119.
Hello. Christopher Reyes, 904 New York Street, Memphis, Tennessee.
Okay, you may proceed.
All right. Thank you for having us today. We're here to talk about.
Excuse me. When you get ready to speak, say your name first and an address.
Yes ma'am.
Each time.
Yes ma'am. My name is Christopher Reyes. We're here to tell you about Bevo and our project on Mud Island. We're building a 30,000 square foot family attraction for Memphis and Shelby County. Some of you should have a, a hard copy of our presentation, and so I'm moving on to page two. The challenges that we're facing is creating a world-class immersive experience. We're trouting, forming civic spaces, and creating affordable, large-scale family entertainment. We're going to be doing, boosting our local economy and creating jobs. And we'll be doing a lot of training with students and young people for tech jobs of the future. Most of all, we're bringing Mud Island back to life. Many of you might have known that Mud Island, that essentially the River Park Museum, has been closed since 2018, and we intend to bring it back to life soon. And we're doing this, in 2020, I did a pop-up. It was called Quadrant 360, and. What? Oh, page three, sorry. Oh, I, I see it here now. Great, great. In 2020, I did a pop-up. I was supposed to be open for six months, but got two because of COVID. And we, I put one family at a time through this immersive experience. I sold out in two days and had 4,000-plus attendees. And the main thing that this showed me is that Memphis was ready for a large-scale immersive entertainment project. In order to, oh yeah, page four, screen four. One of the things that we did was we're very connected with the community, and we used a lot of volunteers and also did workshops to teach future world builders how to do essentially what we do. We worked with New Ballet Ensemble and Dunbar Elementary. Students learned about the world-building process and designed their own worlds, from environments to plant life to creatures. And then the students contributed to the installation that we built. Ultimately, our future world builders learned new processes and gained skills. My favorite quote was from this little girl on the left of the, on the page. She said, "My, my favorite thing was learning how to make art from garbage." Our ethos is for Memphis, by Memphis, and we celebrate our creative culture. One of our biggest strengths is our connection to the local community, and we're doing community outreach. We are currently doing community outreach and embracing Memphis, Memphis's creative culture. The community has shown their support by investing their time, money, and reclaimed materials. Yeah, great. We're making a one-of-a-kind global attraction. We're redefining Memphis, or immersive experiences, and our goal is to add over 1 million new visitors to Memphis. This is based on similar projects of its size. We believe Bevo will create an influx of tourism and tax dollars. And ultimately, we believe Memphians should not have to drive hours away to have a memorable family experience. Slide seven. Again, we're combining elements of play and interactive story and video game play in the, in the real world. Through our use of technology, Bevo, Bevo will continue to innovate and create new content to ensure return visitors. We have focused, we have a focus on job creation for local creatives and utilizing local resources as much as possible. A major part of our ethos is working together with organizations to do good in the community. Currently, in 2025, the immersive entertainment market has reached 150 billion. By 20, by 2033, it'll be at 800 billion. So we believe Memphis and Shelby County has an opportunity to be part of that growth. We believe that Bevo will put Memphis on the map as, and set the stage for future growth of the immersive entertainment industry. Slide 10, great, thank you. We believe that we can add a million-plus visitors to the visitor, to the tourism that's already here, increasing traffic and raising the bar for everyone. Our ticket pricing will be comparable, comparable to other immersive attractions. We intend to create affordable and make it affordable and accessible, accessible with low-cost ticketing and annual passes and community outreach programs. We believe that Bevo can be the, the start of an immersive district. Not only with our project, but with others created locally, as well as attracting other larger immersive entertainment experiences. Slide 12, thank you. Bevo is a shared social experience catering, catering to a wide audience. There's families, tourists, gamers, so, story fans, such as films and episodic series. And we've seen that 80%, 86, over 80% of fans will, are willing to travel to come to an immersive experience. These are our conservative financial projections based on an average ticket price of $25. Meow Wolf, which is based in Santa Fe, welcomed 400,000 visitors its first year. And that was in 2016. We believe that Memphis and Mud Island will do much better than that. We are, our creative team is led by locals and creatives and technologists. Our team is growing dynamically with a wide, a wide range of professional expertise. And we are a tech-forward entertainment project with a focus on art, music, and play. Mind you, all these, everyone is local. Our Board of Advisors is growing and includes industry experts from outside of Memphis. We have Charles Babs. He is ex-Disney and currently at Meta and is our enter, experience expert. While Michael Scarborough, who is a local, is our, is heading up the business side of, of our board. And Tony Pulucchiari, who is from L R K, which is the largest architecture firm here in Memphis. So we're, we're seek, we're using, we have board members from the industry that can help us through the process. And the final slide, thank you. We're seeking private investment of, for Phase One, which is $5 million. This is not, we're not asking the city or the county for this money. This is being raised privately. But what we are looking for are grants and funding opportunities, particularly capital improvement programs or programming programs. Things that will help the, the participants and the visitors experience when visiting Mud Island. So we're not saying, we're not asking for this money specifically for our, our, what we're offering, but for the area around us. And we're looking, we're looking to have active collaboration with the city and the county and other nonprofits for summer camps, educational workshops, field trips, and general community outreach. I think, do you guys have anything to add to that? All right, I'll let you, you want to do that?
Oh, sure. So we, we want to do this in two different phases. We've, we're currently, we've, we've raised about $200,000 in seed funding, which has gotten us thus far. And, and if I, before I forget to do this, we'd, we'd love to have any or all of you out to tour Bevo, out to Mud Island, so we can show you the progress that we have made. But we are doing this in phases to break up the 33,000 square feet. And so we'll have, well, two main phases, one boat per phase. There, there are two giant boats in the Old River Museum. And we need five mil, we're looking to raise $5 million of private funding for each of those two phases. I'm sorry, was that, was that to answer the question? Okay. And, and we have some time left, if there, if there are any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just going to the queue here, seeing any questions here, so. And I apologize, I was listening in another meeting, but how long has this project, have you all been working on this project here? And tell us about the relationship with the city and it's being the city-owned property and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so about a year and change. And we've had some, some challenges. We, we had a sprinkler pipe burst, so we've, but I, I have to say that the, the city's been very responsive. We have, in responding to the needs, repairing the drywall, et cetera. In, in fact, the first, the first person to mention to us that we might want to consider Mud Island was Mayor Young. So other, other locations had been, when he was, when he was at the Downtown Memphis Commission. So, yeah, and, and we, we have a, a contract with Memphis River Parks Partnership for five years with an option for another five years. And again, we have a good working relationship with, with Art Davis. So we, we met recently with him, for instance, to help him understand what our CIP fund needs are for his next year's request. So we have a contract with MRPP and, and the, the mayor's been very supportive and, and we've had some city council people out and just, we've been giving tours, so many tours. And the response has been really great. And I, you and I connected recently at a, at a, at a meeting, and, and I appreciate so much you having us out.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Yeah, sure, thank you. All right, Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. It's not often that we get guests with paint on their hands, so I've just been looking at your hands the whole time.
Yeah, it's real.
Yeah, I know, right, it is. I had the opportunity to not do like a full tour, but just to put my eyes on the site, and it was just really exciting just to see that space with some energy and love, and so I'm just excited to see what this looks like. With a couple of other museums that have come to present to us, they have contemplated like unique offerings, like I think one of them, maybe even The Brooks, was trying to figure out how to work the numbers so that there could be a free Shelby County Day, where Shelby Countyans could come and access the museum for free. Is there potential in your plan to be able to work something that could be a local offering? Although $25 might possibly, possibly be within the realm of reason, I do understand like the poverty stats that we have here, that it would still be prohibitive for a number of people. So when we think about, our transit system is not up and running, so they have to figure out how to get downtown and like, I don't know, like, all the other things that come with coming out of your neighborhood from the other side, that can add up well beyond 25. So is there any way that we could run some numbers to figure out what a discounted rate could look like for locals here in the city or county? That's one thing, and then the other thing is, I just wanted to figure out, do y'all know within Shelby County government, who's the point person to talk about CIP funding? Or is that something that you're asking of the body?
Actually, I don't know that last piece, but, but to speak to your first part of your question is, yes, we, we've had some, we've discussed that, and yes, we want to absolutely include that. I mean, from, from a kind of ethos and heartwise perspective, we want to be the most accessible place in terms of 88, people with disabilities, people of low means, we, we want to do all we can do. So I'll say that kind of just qualitatively, but, but, but obviously more precision needs to be added to that and with, with real policies. Did you have something else you want to say?
Hi, I'm Ruben Brunson, 1387 Downriver Drive, Memphis, Tennessee. One of the things we want to do is, as far as offering students an education programs, we want every student in Shelby County to have the opportunity to come here. This is like them being able to go to Disney World. There's going to be nothing like this that many of them have ever experienced in their life, and we want them to have this opportunity. We are certainly willing to work with the government, with nonprofits, with any organizations that can help us bring them there, because this is a once-in-a-lifetime experience for a lot of people.
But one other thing I'll say is, our world builder program really, which, which Chris touched on really briefly of what he did in kind of microcosm with his pop-up, working with Dunbar Elementary, is something we want to replicate. So we are, we actually already have a classroom space built out, and, you know, we, we hope to be, to have summer camps this summer, if we can, if we can get our acting gear, but, but, but down, going forward, we absolutely want to have not only the opportunity to visit and, and, and have fun with their family, but we want to have an opportunity for them to come, and like Chris was saying, the little girl, make art out of garbage, we want them to learn the kind of, not only the arts and crafts, but the technical skills and the, you know, we're going to have a holographic AI character you can talk to. We want our kids to be, the students to be exposed to what that technology is in a focused, programmatic, curricularized way.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, in, in general, we are, we want the community to be involved, and I think that having young people learn about how, you know, see, learn and see things that they would never have access to, such as like how Disney World is built, you know, they, that's what we want to do. There's a lot of technology, there's a lot of storytelling and physical building of things and the creation of worlds, and we want them to be a part of that process.
Also, to answer your second question, we are certainly looking for a point person to, to help us as far as what opportunities would be available, what partnerships would be available with Shelby County. So, you know, we were open to your help with this. The first thing we really wanted to do here is just say, here we are and what we're doing, because a lot of people, you know, have not had the opportunity to find out what this is all about, but it is, it's a huge opportunity for Memphis, and we're super excited to bring here. We appreciate you guys letting us present.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. Would it be financed, the best person for them to recommend that they reach out to?
You know, my, first of all, thank you for coming as well. I mean, it's something, it's always good to, we can hear about things going on and, and how we can be supportive. You know, my suggestion first, if you have some conversations with Mayor Young, that you do the same with Mayor Harris, start there with the administration and, and, you know, understand what involvement we can be, and obviously continue to keep us as, as involved as you can there. But that might, might be my next suggestion to you, to start there, and then again, we can continue to have conversations in the committee about it as well. Commissioner Thornton, and you want to put Commissioner Thornton's time back on, well, I'll, you just, I'm, I'm making, I'm making note of it, you just keep going, I know you, you'll get three minutes.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate that. So a couple of things, I would also recommend that you reach out to M S C S to figure out what a formalized partnership could look like. Of course, I was happy to see Dunbar, which is a District 10 school, involved, but my heart goes out to all of our, you know, schools that are in low to moderate income communities, and oftentimes I see people who have a very robust list of schools that are engaged, and then there's the gap, the schools that never, for whatever reason, connect to the great resources. And so coincidentally, in a district like District 10, we often don't show up for great opportunities, and so I would love, I'm the Chair this year of Education, to come, accompany you with your meeting with M S C S and help facilitate that, so that we can talk through what a better partnership looks like. Because I mean, you think about the Civil Rights Museum, and it's, I feel like every third grader, by rite of passage of being, you know, a Memphian goes to the Civil Rights Museum, why not add, you know, this particular experience on that list, where students are able to, to just jump right in and get something different other than just a historical context, like being able to be in the space, which is just so cool. I would hate for them to not experience something that's in their downtown, and we know that there are huge barriers to people accessing great things downtown. So M S C S definitely echo the point about the mayor and figuring that part out, and understand the time is right now, it's budget season, so let's try and get these meetings sooner than later, so that we can be sure that you can be factored in and not trying to chase the dollars after everything has been sold up. And then the other thing I would just say, your board of directors, if we could try to diversify, like I was looking at the persons that are on it, like I don't know how many people are native Memphians, but just having a point person who can come to the table with that perspective of just hard-to-reach, vulnerable populations, poor zip codes, you know, low to moderate income census tract, someone who can just come and always chime in from that perspective would be helpful from the top as you're moving forward. But thank y'all for all you do, and I'm excited to get our commission tour set up soon. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Sugarman?
Thank you so much, Chair, and so again, I apologize, I've been in and out, so I missed a lot of your presentation, but however, I love the idea that you're using Mud Island, because for, you know, this is a, I love Mud Island. So having said that, what is the ask of the county government as far as dollar amount? You may have already said that, I may not have been in here, and then I noticed that you all start in late 2025. When do you all think that you all have it up and going and open to the public? Is there a timeline?
So one of the main purposes of this meeting is to find out what opportunities are available. We want to look at what partnerships are available. We're not asking, you know, for, just, just to hand us money. We want to see things that are going to not only improve the experience that we can create, but also for Mud Island in general and the city for people to get here. So just building those partnerships, so we can figure out what opportunities are available to partner with you guys and bring this experience to Memphis is super important. As far as the timeline, we are looking very aggressively to open at the beginning of next year, and that's going to require us to move fast, and our budget season is right now too, so we are, you know, actively trying to raise private investment of $5 million. It's private investment, and to be able to bring this experience to the level that we think Memphis deserves.
And I just want to say this, again, thank you for this, you know, wonderful experience that we're going to have, but it would be helpful, because you've already been asked, for example, by the zoo, and they have a specific dollar amount for a specific purpose, and so if you can get an idea about the specific dollar amount for a specific purpose, that would be very helpful, especially when we come before the commission, because a lot of times they want accountability, as well as you all probably heard, of transparency. So for example, if you ask us for X amount of dollars, how will that be utilized? And that would be helpful, thank you.
Thank you, all right. If there's nothing else, thank you all for your time. Thank you. All right, and that concludes Committee Number Seven.
We will now convene Committee Number 11, Core City Neighborhoods and Housing. Madam Parliamentarian, please read the first item.
Item one is a resolution approving the conveyance of one county-owned delinquent tax parcel acquired by Shelby County from Shelby County Tax Sale Number 1304 to the City of Memphis for nominal consideration for use in the City of Memphis's Park Division pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated Section 67-5-2507B1A, and authorizing the county mayor to execute a quitclaim deed, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
Okay, thank you, Madam Parliamentarian, this item has been moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by myself, and we will recognize Ms. Sykes Wood.
Thank you, Esther Sykes Wood, Shelby County Land Bank Administrator. This is a small sliver of Lincoln Park. We found it as we were going through our inventory, and we would like to donate it to the City of Memphis for their parks, neighborhoods, since it is completely contained within the park.
All right, let's see, let me get back to my screen, Commissioner Sugarman. Are you in the queue?
No.
Oh, okay. Seeing no members in the queue, we will move to the question, Madam Clerk. Every member, can she vote?
Please, I'm putting it now as a yes, my screen's not working. Oh, there it goes, okay, thank you.
Every member voted.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Brooks, and Lowry, we have three aye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, this item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, next item, please.
Item two is a resolution approving the sale of 39 county-owned delinquent tax parcels acquired by Shelby County from various Shelby County tax sales to identified purchasers at various prices collectively totaling $204,350, pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated Section 67-5-2507, and authorizing the Shelby County mayor to execute quitclaim deeds, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
Thank you, this item has been moved by Commissioner Sugarman, and seconded by myself. Ms. Sykes Wood?
Esther Sykes Wood, Land Bank Administrator. This, the total back taxes were $359,520.77. Total asking price was $191,800. Total sales price is the $204,350. The back taxes minus the sales price is, we are negative 155, $155,170.77 in collecting the back taxes. However, we are $12,550 over our asking price. There are eight out-of-town buyers buying 13 properties for a total of $107,263.13. The asking, I'm sorry, that was the back taxes. The total sales price is $63,300. That is negative $43,43,963 in back tax collection, however, it is $3,800 over asking price. I believe Moog was one of the individuals you requested. They could not be here today, they are in Dallas, but, but he said he could come Monday if you needed to speak to him about his purchases. And additionally, addressing the out-of-town purchasers.
Oh wait, hold on, he's in Dallas?
Correct, he is an out-of-town purchaser, he's on this one. I believe he's one of the ones that you want to, or perhaps he was just on a business trip, I'm sorry, I might not have my, but he will be here Monday if you need to speak to him about his purchases.
Well, I don't need him to have to travel here for three minutes. If he could, I'm interested in the future development and, and the timeline is what I'm interested in, and then I'd also, well, I guess, maybe, do we have people on Zoom during commission meeting? I hate for somebody to have to drive, travel from Dallas to come to a commission meeting for three minutes.
Zoom, so that we can wait for them to be able to log into the meeting.
Okay, Ms. Sykes Wood, let's see how we can get him via Granicus or something, so that we will prevent that travel, that's just too much. I do need to understand his motivation, though. He can just give our office a call and, or Cecilia, she can tell him how to hook in for commission meeting. I think that'd be more, a lot more convenient.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other members in the queue, we'll move to the vote. Madam Clerk? Please, can she vote? Madam Clerk, please give us a tally.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Brooks, and Lowry, we have three aye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, this item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, next item.
The next item is a discussion item to last approximately 10 minutes. XAI, Brent Mayo presenting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I did hear from the, the Chair of this committee sent Brent Mayo three emails. We did not hear back from him, but I did hear back from, I'm trying to find the email, because I just got it this morning here, so that you will have it. Okay. The Chair did hear from Mr. Bobby White, and Mr. White, and this is for the record, wanted to follow up to his text message from this weekend to officially affirm, and he did text me to say that Mr., that Brent Mayo was not, possibly not going to be here, was not a definite, but this morning's email, he says, I'm, this is for the record, I want, wanted to follow up to our text messages from this weekend to officially affirm that Brent Mayo from XAI is not scheduled to attend today's meeting, to which he was invited. In speaking with him, he shared that he was not only able to attend, but that he was never in receipt of an official invitation. So let the Chair state for the record that the Chair sent three emails to the public email addresses, and of course, I don't have his private email addresses, so I sent them to the public email addresses that were available. You have his private email address, okay, I don't want that. I'm hopeful that his absence today, not negatively characterized, given that his name, I'm reading the text message, so I'm missing some, there are some verbs and so forth missing, given that his name is actually on the agenda, I'm sensitive to this not being viewed as his backing out of attending the meeting, given that he never even received the invitation. This is especially in light of citizens who may attend based on seeing his name on the agenda. Thank you in advance for your attention to this matter, best regards, Bobby White. Now, let me just say this, thank you very much, Ms. White, for your text, but it was sent, the Chair sent three emails, okay, so I'm not in control of his behavior, so I, I can only just send the emails, and if he wants to respond and say he can't come, that's that, but I do not work for XAI, I don't- But I do not work for XAI. I don't work for the chamber. I work for the citizens of Shelby County. All right, we have several cards, and so what I'm going to do, Commissioner Ford.
And I do want to hear from the people, and I will say that if there is proof that there was electronic correspondence to basically anybody, I mean, when you put something on the agenda, whenever I put something on the agenda, I want to make sure that there's confirmation. If you're saying that there were three emailed correspondences, I would love to see those correspondences, because the last thing I would want the constituency to do is to come here. You get to see all the sausage how it was made, but if those emails happened and then there was confirmation, but then that person didn't show up, say what you got to say. But if those emails did not happen, or if the emails happened at a particular time after the agenda was put on, I just want to say that that might not necessarily be fair to the people that could have done some other things as well. So there's two different pots. If there was confirmation and the people aren't there, say what you got to say. But if there was an email or a set of emails, I would like to see those emails, but notwithstanding if three emails were sent, but we're talking about some text messages after the agenda was posted without necessarily knowing if anybody is... And this is just on any item. I just want to make sure that those that are here definitely want to hear you, but I just want to make sure that we know what actually transpired on that time. So I don't have any of those emails in front of me. I could do a FOIA request if I wanted to, but at the same time, this Commissioner, without asking, sometimes you got to hear people talk before you say what you already know. When I saw the item, I went ahead and did some research myself on if anything got sent, this, that, and the other. And it was brought to my attention that those individuals did not receive the correspondence or did not, and slash or did not give confirmation that they were going to be here today. And I just want to say for the record that if we do put anything on the agenda, since we have a lot of the people, especially in my district, that are here, and your time is valuable, we want to make sure that there's confirmation prior to putting any item on the agenda, because your energies could be exhausted doing things personal and otherwise, and just want to make sure that, yeah, yeah, I got you. I got you. No, I get you, and look. Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm saying my last piece of my 26, and I'm going to sit here and listen to everything that y'all have said, since y'all have stayed for the longest. And he wasn't going to be here because there was no confirmation. So I just want to make sure that when I talked to Mr. White, there was confirmation. When I talked to my other source, there was confirmation that he was not going to be here. So I'll be here to listen to the folks, because y'all have been here listening to us forever. I can't wait to hear what y'all got to say for your two and three minutes, so that's all I have.
Mr. Keishon Pearson.
Hello. All right. And I do have to start by saying it's Keishon Pearson. I am part of the Pearson family.
My apologies. You know I know that.
I know, I know.
You know I know that.
It's all right.
Thank you.
And so I'm Keishon Pearson, 3831 Masterson, and I'm here today. Period. I'm here today, right? And as a part of Memphis Community Against Pollution, as a part of our community in 38109, I'm here because today we learned that XAI is using thirty-five methane gas burning turbines. They have submitted a permit to our Shelby County Health Department for fifteen, yet they are using over double that amount with no permit. This is a company that is treating our community with disrespect and have no regard for our public health. We are in the midst and have been living through a public health crisis. Our families are dying. Our children have the most asthma attacks in our entire state. Our children miss more school than anybody else because of asthma-related and respiratory issues. Nobody here would switch addresses with somebody in Box Town. Nobody. And to allow someone of this caliber to come in and build a power plant in our city without our permission is egregious, and it must be ended now. I don't care who you are. You shouldn't be able to build whatever you want without our permission. As this governing body, the only body who stood up to this billionaire and said, "You need a public process. You have to come before a public body with the Shelby County Health Department proposing and committing to the public hearing that will take place on April 25th," that's the only public process that we've seen. This project is operating in the status quo of environmentally racist procedures and practices that have entrenched our community, 38109, Box Town, Westwood, West Junction, and pollution for decades, and it has cost me both of my grandmothers. Twenty years now without them. Nobody else should be burying their families because these rogue, rich, white, racist people continue to build projects that are suffocating us. No one else has to die from asthma attacks. This is all preventable. We have to step in and do the preventing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. You know I know your name.
You still say "person."
Well, I still know your name. Thank you so much for your comments. I appreciate that. Let me say one other thing about the public comment process, and it's really an insult that you all had to come down here for, well, two weeks ago, to plead for a public hearing. A public hearing for future, for your future, whatever issues, is required on any publicly financed, direct or indirect projects, efforts, what have you. So particularly by any, wherever there is public funding, public participation is required, and you don't have to come and beg for a community meeting. All right, Ms. Gladney, Ms. Sarah Gladney.
Hi, my name is Sarah Gladney. I live at 1751 East Box Town Road, 38109, and I'm here today because of the concern of the environmental issues in our community. We have fought for many years just to breathe clean air. We have fought to walk in our communities without having to pass out. And first of all, we had to hear about this facility through the grapevine. We didn't get any information. We haven't had a public hearing, a public meeting, and we supposed to accept this. We are three miles away from the XAI. We never heard a word. And so today, I feel like the company is not here. We can't ask any questions, and we just have many concerns, and we're not clear on this matter. Box Town has been known as the community of false, broken promises, and we can't believe anything if it's not in writing and if we don't see the actions behind it. So today, we just want to say that our health is our wealth. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pamela Moses.
Hello, Pamela Moses. I want to first say that when I take my time to come to things, it's very serious to me. I am a person that's had asthma, not my whole life, but acquired since I've been here, and I was accosted, and I feel like it was an attempt to try to silence me today. I don't know why, but that's not why I'm here. But I say to you, Commissioner Brooks, my Commissioner, and other Commissioners, that I stand here to address a pressing issue that affects not just our present, but our future. And if you believe that children are the future, you must believe that having interactive things are good, but if we can't breathe, we're not going to be able to enjoy any of it. So we have heard grand promises of innovation and economic growth, but let's take a moment to consider the reality behind these claims. The environmental concerns surrounding gas turbine engines, which is part of this project, are significant. The engines contribute to the air and the noise pollution. We cannot afford to sacrifice the well-being of our community for the sake of profit, particularly when the ultimate goal seems to be enriching individuals like Elon Musk. TBA has a ultimate goal with him, and that is to bring a nuclear plant here. They have tried it before in 1979, and it was unsuccessful. And I'm trying to tell you, if we don't have something in writing from the community to the builders or developers saying that there are parameters, this is going to be catastrophic, not only for Memphis, but all surrounding areas. He is in a race to space, and he would do anything and hurt anybody to do it. He doesn't care anything about anything but money. And I know some of y'all don't have any. I'm not a rich person, but I do value the fact that I can breathe. I urge this commission to take a stand. This is not the time for us to fight amongst each other as Commissioners. This is a time for us to all come together and say, "We need a damn community benefits agreement with parameters and an agreement that you're not just going to make trillions of dollars off of this project. You're going to invest a couple hundred million before you get started." And I don't know how else to say this. If you allow him to do this without any benefit to the community, it will be to the detriment. I don't want it personally at all, but if you're going to allow him to do this, you need to make sure that Box Town USA looks like Box Town USA. And I urge you to have the power, you have the power in this project to stand with the community, and you must advocate for us, not the selfish benefits where you did your backroom deals with the Mud Island Restaurant, all of that. I'm going to tell on y'all. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because see, I know what's going on. Marvin Stockwell just came here. He on everybody's board. He did same thing with the University of Memphis. When are we going to get something out of this? Are we going to just die? Because if that's the case, then let me know now, and I won't come down here anymore. You don't have to put the sheriff on me. I thank you for your time, and y'all have a good day.
I got it. Ms. Overstreet.
Ms. Overstreet.
Ms. Overstreet.
Hello, my name is Orion Overstreet. I live at 605 Houston Street, 38111. When we were listening to the woman two and a half hours ago, who was speaking about XAI at the beginning of this meeting, someone asked her about, I think it was you, asked her about, well, what about tech replacing jobs? And she said, "Oh, well, it's all about how you look at it," which I thought was a funny response to that question. And it got me thinking about how the people who are not in this room, who should be in this room, look at all of us who come to these meetings and who support each other and who drive each other here and who hold hands and pray afterwards. Do they look at us like ants that they need to just kind of get off the kitchen counter to do whatever they want? Do they look at us like obstacles to just kick to the side so they could fill their goalpost all the way up to the top? I mean, these are people who do not have their hearts in Memphis. Like, I feel incredibly hopeful today. I just got a text. We've got a community meeting at the University of Memphis today, tonight, and all yesterday I had students coming up to me on skateboards or coming up to me, like, in the hallways, or I had to step out of classes to pass them flyers to take around and pass them scenes to take around. And I just got a text from the campus garden workers that they've set up seating for us, and they've, like, potlocked and got food for us. Kids at the University of Memphis care because kids at the University of Memphis come from these communities. I was in a room with a whiteboard until 12:00 in the morning last night with a couple people whose families are from South Memphis, and we were just, like, brainstorming and, like, pulling books out of our backpacks, like, how do we make people care? I don't, I know you guys are not the people who need to hear this, so... But that warmth, that power is what's going to be inevitably lost if we allow him to come into our communities, because we are fighting really, really, really hard, but we can't fight poison forever, and we can't fight the displacement that this is going to bring into our communities forever. You're not always going to get to see us coming back. Thank you.
Thank you, and you can rest assured that I can say that this county commission does here. We do know what is important, and we know who we work for. Thank you. Ms. Fox, Ms. Christine Fox.
Christine Fox, North McNeil Street, 38112, District Seven. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here as a concerned citizen to comment on the complete lack of transparency around the XAI project in Memphis. As Brent Mayo's absence today highlights, the company and its owner, Elon Musk, have no appetite for or interest in hearing from the community members most affected by XAI's toxic and harmful presence in their neighborhoods, specifically South Memphis. I and other community members who are alarmed by the rapid implementation of data centers in Memphis are here today and all the other times we have been here to implore and urge you to put the brakes on this project and others like it, to allow time to study the community impacts and hear from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Price, Brenda Price. She's gone. Okay. Let's see, next, Ms. Esther May Knox. She here?
I'm sorry, it's Easter, like the holiday.
Ma'am?
I'm sorry, it's Easter, E-A-S-T-E-R, Knox.
Oh, okay. I'm just mispronouncing everybody's names.
That's all right, Ms. Brooks. That's okay. You don't have to apologize.
Thank you so much.
I am Esther May Knox. I'm a resident and a senior citizen at 3789 Box Town Road, Memphis, Tennessee. I thank God for my community, and I thank God for the supporters that we have, like Keishon, Justin Pearson, Commissioner Ford Jr. You know, they listen, and that's what we need, people to listen. So I, I come to you today as a senior citizen, a 75-year-old lady that has medical problems, you know, due to the smell that we have in the area. I'm a country girl, and I love to get up early in the morning, about four or five, and open my window, but when I open up that window, I smell everything but the right thing, and the right thing is the clean air that I need. As I stated, I'm a country girl. And my husband has asthma. He has the COPD, and I have the COPD. And we, as senior citizens, you know, we want to see our grandkids, although I don't have any children, but the kids in the neighborhood, we want to see them progress. We want to see them happy. kids in the neighborhood, we want to see them progress. We want to see them happy. You know, a lot of times, they have to get up early in the morning to catch the bus for school and all of that. But we are asking and we are begging you all to please put a stop. Listen, you know, Elon, I mean Elon Musk have all the money. He's a millionaire, billionaire, whatever kind of air he is, but we need clean air. That's what we want, clean air. And that's why we are here. We're the last people here, my community, Box Town at 3109 zip area in South Memphis area. We always have experienced this smell. So, we're asking for you all's support, Ms. Brooks and Mr. Ford. And I thank God, as I stated, for Keishon Pearson and Justin Pearson. You know, they always have been helping us down through the years, some, you know, some good young men and I appreciate that. So, we are asking for help. I need help. I'm 75 years old and I'm not going to be here that long, but I thank God for the years that I've been here, you know. But we need help. Let's stop Elon Musk and a lot more of these people that's trying to put us down. You know, they tried to put us down when they had the, back in the day, but you know, we're going to keep going because God got us here. He got our back. Thank you.
Thank you. Amen. No, no, no. Ms. Queen Yancy, is she here? Okay.
Greetings. My name is Queen Yancy. 3771 Swanee Road, Memphis, Tennessee, 38109. Very short and simple. The pollution, the air, is a stench to our nostrils. Will you please stop it and allow us to breathe clean air and live a decent and wholesome life in our beloved Box Town community? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments. We'll now move to the Q Commissioner Thornton. You recognize?
Thank you Chair and thank you to everyone who has sat through the meeting and spoke today. I support your efforts. I'm just curious, Mr. Pearson, can you just come back up? I want to get some latest updates on what we're doing on April 25th. So, to the Chair, Mr. Mayo, do we, was that mentioned who actually personally invited him today?
I sent the emails.
Okay.
Well, my assistant sent two emails and one through digital, what is it, LinkedIn? Yeah.
Okay, but he never responded and committed?
No, he did not.
Okay. All right. For the April 25th meeting, is it our understanding that he or someone from the company will be represented?
This is my experience with Brent Mayo in public spaces, is that he does not appear when the community is present, only in the audience of millionaires and billionaires and wealthy folks, right? So, outside of that, I have not seen him and so that is my current expectation.
But are we going to extend, let's just backtrack to the other question. So, I know that there's another meeting that the Ford family is planning. And so, for this particular meeting, it's just MCAP and the Health Department? Or do you, what is your understanding of what this April 25th meeting will be?
Yep. So, from my understanding, this is a meeting that will be hosted by the Shelby County Health Department. And so, we haven't been contacted about how to run a show or how that will play out or who are the partners in that event.
And since, I mean, I'm just mindful that you continue to recruit, you know, 70-year-olds to come out to these meetings and parking is not easy and it's just a lot in terms of just watchdogging this issue. Is there a desire that you have for how this meeting on April 25th will go? And would you like to have a more involved role that we can advocate, that you actually get put on program? Or, I just want to make sure that if y'all are showing up, that it isn't just people talking to you, that it's actually something that's meeting your interests and your needs right now. So, just giving you the space to be able to talk about what that might look like on your end.
Thank you. And that's a very thoughtful question. Oh, this is, yes, Keishon Pearson. And for us, what we are expecting and what would be the most helpful is to have an event where there is a moderation. And I would volunteer to moderate, have past experience in moderating events with Mayor Paul Young and would also, you know, moderate an event of this caliber with Dr. Taylor. And what we don't want to happen is what has happened in the past. Our folks are hoarded in, we're given comment cards, those comment cards are taken, and then they decide what questions will be read. They surmise the questions to something that sounds like their talking points and the public is still never heard. That is what we want to avoid. We need a forum that allows the public, the people, to actually talk, to have their actual voices heard, to speak. For too long, in this community, folks have been silenced and left out. We've been left out of the public process that should have taken place before these folks even got here. And we've been left out of any public meetings surrounding their continuous overdevelopment in this space. So, we would love, as Memphis Community Against Pollution, as the Box Town community, Westwood, we would love to have a more involved role that has intentionality around us actually being a part of the program. We continue to be left out of the program, whether it's the development of our communities, whether it's the financial aspects or the economics, we continue to be left out. April 25th, at 5 o'clock at Fairleigh High School, we do not want to be left out. And so, we would like to be included in the planning sessions and the planning meetings in order that we do create a forum that is reflective and does create the space that we need for our community.
So, I'll get back in Q's here.
Okay, so Mr., I don't understand. Who set this meeting? How did you find out about the April 25th meeting?
That information was sent to me from Scott Banbury at Sierra Club.
Okay.
But it is, it's an official document from Shelby County Health Department.
And Scott Banbury sent it to you? Okay.
That's right.
Commissioner Thornton, have you received communication regarding April 25th? Okay, we need to fix that. Because I think you should be involved in the agenda setting for, if this, if it is in fact April 25th. So, I guess we need to check with the Director of the Health Department. Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. And let me just go back to what was said two weeks ago with the Health Department Director. You know, she said that there would be a public meeting, but that meeting was not fully defined to basically, in my opinion, satisfy what a meeting should be. I don't know if any of you all got that flyer that had the two QR codes, but having a QR code take you somewhere where you might need internet or just being able to call in, in this commissioner's eyes, does not suffice to a meeting. That just suffices checking a box for the federal government. And I don't know if you all agree or not, but as far as a meeting is concerned, I don't want to be, I don't want the minimum to happen, to be done just to check a box. That's number one. Number two, I do have an update, Commissioner Thornton. We're waiting on two more confirmations and when we have those confirmations, they will be documented confirmations so that when that meeting does transpire, if those individuals do not show up, we can be glad to say, hey, we did contact those individuals. They confirmed. Now the seats are empty. Remember on record, I invited our Health Director, who gave me an email. I don't know if you, I gave it to some of y'all, so I don't know if it got to the leaders. But on one side, I put the invite. On the other side was her response, basically saying, I, I can't do it for legal reasons, whatever the case may be. It was real vague. But when we do have our meeting, we will still have a chair available for the Health Department Director. She has been invited. You have proof of that. So, if she decides not to come, so be it. But I sincerely hope that whatever meeting does happen, and anybody that's been at one of my community meetings, I had one in Graceland a few months ago, where I showed the 105 pieces of legislation passed and over $70 million going into the community, where I've had to make sure that some of the things that were taken away come back in, such as many of the people that live, work and play in 3109. You know, one of the big groups, Kroger, left and said, after 56 years, we don't care about the community anymore. This commissioner had to make sure that the grocery store, the clinic, and the pharmacy came back because interest wanted to take away. But I say that, Commissioner Thornton, because we need to have a real forum. And as soon as this commissioner, and I just texted my father, he said that we're waiting for two more confirmations, we will make sure that we have an actual meeting with the experts for the purposes of making sure that it's not just click the QR box. Everybody doesn't have internet. Or call this number and we'll listen to what you have to say and we'll just put it in the file. My last comment is this. In my community meetings, I never do that, fill out the card and, oh, that's hard, throw it away. That's hard, throw it away. Oh, we won't talk about that, throw it away. I don't do any of that because if you got a question, I'm going to answer it. We may not agree, but it is, but it is going to be transparent. And thank you.
Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, I just have a few questions. Pearson, thank you for coming and being very vocal. There's some things that you brought to my attention as where, that I didn't know about, and I'm sure the public may not be aware about, but having said that, you mentioned about a meeting on Saturday. Can you tell who's going to be there? What's going to be told so that anybody can come and speak? And then the other thing is, there's a list of MDAs and I was wondering if White could give me a list of all the MDAs as well as a contact information for Brent Mayo, so we can also extend him an invitation to the town hall meeting on Saturday. And then the third thing, I would like for the City Council and the Commission to look at it or some type of resolution as far as what the permit. Now, I don't know what the process would look like as far as maybe a moratorium or either cancellation, but this is moving too fast. It's just, it's just too fast. And my other concern is that, you know, smoke and dagger type thing. You say, you know, you didn't get this, you didn't get that. Show up so we can ask those hard questions. Because when you're not transparent, we're going to call you out. We're Miffians. We call everybody out. So, again, just talk about the Saturday meeting. And then, Mr. White, if you wouldn't mind giving me or everybody in the Commission, rather, contact information for Brent Mayo, because I'm sure we all have, you know, questions. The second thing, I would like a list of MDAs. Thank you.
Thank you. Keishon Pearson. I'll start by saying, everybody is welcome, including Brent Mayo and XAI, to a town hall that's being held by my brother, Representative Justin J. Pearson, at Mount Pisgah Baptist Church. It's going to be at 3636 Weaver Road. Myself, Protect Our Aquifer, my, our community, the Box Town Community Association, and Young Gifted and Green will be present to talk about XAI, its environmental impact to our city and to our community specifically. And Representative Pearson will also elaborate on next steps in how to move forward in protecting our state, but especially the city of Memphis, from this oligarchy overtaking of our land and our resources. We, the last thing I'll say is, pollution has always been a problem in South Memphis, always. It was coal ash before methane gas. And in order to stop the status quo from continuing to expand from coal ash to methane turbines to people coming in and building their own power plants, at some point, our Shelby County Health Department will have to shut down organizations that are not complying with our rules and the protection of our community. At some point, a cease and desist has to happen. At some point, operations have to stop. At some point, we have to prioritize clean air, clean water, clean soil for the people of Box Town, just like we do in Lakeland, Collierville, just like we do in Germantown and all these other places. Box Town deserves that same protection. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add one note. I'll have to say this, because I'm probably, I know I'm the oldest person in the room, 76. You know what? You said, you identified all the pollution and how long it's been going on in South Memphis. It's been the same thing in North Memphis and every core city, inner-city community. You know why? Because we allow it. Our advocacy has been neo. But you know what is so encouraging to me as a senior citizen? The young voices that I hear now that are resisting, they are resisting in addition to the senior citizen voices coming together resisting this because it's been going on and on. And so, I guess now enough is enough. I guess we've had, have we had enough?
Yes.
I guess we've had enough. So, if they don't do better, then they would have, what? FAFO?
That's right.
Thank you. Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you Chair. Mr. Pearson, one more question to you. So, if you could just follow up with a formal request to be included, the same points that you made earlier, if you could just send that to me, then I will send that to Chief Taylor and CC, my colleagues, just so they know that the formal request was made by MCAP to be a part of it. And if you could just list all those different roles that you would like to play a part in, then that'll be helpful. And then, the public comment period that was mentioned, does it close before or after April 25th, per your understanding?
Per my understanding, it does close after April 25th, but very shortly after. It closes on the 30th.
Nice. So, if we could leverage that space to encourage people who attend to make public comment, like let's figure out how to formally, like, get people to do that. And it might be appropriate at the hearing for Dr. Taylor to just educate people. I would love for, if you could, to put in that request for that to be a part of the agenda. It just seems like a responsive thing to do, to walk people through making the public comment in real time as they're hearing the discussion and then they can take that action. Because I mean, some people are probably just going to say, stop Elon, you know. But if you're there and you're getting better talking points, then it'd be good for you to have assistants there to be able to make that in real time. So, that's the second thing. And then the other thing, I see Mr. White is here. You set up a meeting with Brent for the commission in the past. And so, I'm just wondering, was he not present for the tour that was done at the facility? Right. So, you have his contact information. If it would be possible for us to just vet the contact information that we use to send out to him. I don't know if he was actually noticed properly and decided not to come, but at least I'm looking at you and know that you know how to reach him through, you know, email or phone. So, if we could just get that contact information and submit it to the Chair, then we would just make sure that at least we have done our due diligence to formally invite him, if that's okay with you. So, that point, that point, that point. Yeah, just keep us posted. I know that Dr. Taylor said that she wanted to see other elected officials present. So, what concerns me is I just searched my inbox and I didn't see the invitation. And so, you know, we want to get on their calendars, the state officials. And so, we just need to make sure that we formally send that notice so that they don't have that plausible out saying, nobody told me about it. You know, April 25th has come and gone. So, I'll do my part to share the flyer once I receive it with the other electives, because we want them to be there. And let's see what we can do with this agenda. Thank you.
Keishon Pearson, real quick. And so, I will surely send you that information. One point of, I guess a question, was that it was mentioned of an ad hoc committee surrounding this specific permit and moving forward air pollution controls in Shelby County under Director Taylor. So, I did want to see if we had an update on there and... And did we get any update from Director Taylor about how to pursue an extension? Because as it stands, the 25th is five days away from the closing date. And so how can we pursue some type of extension? The Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation, their permits require at least 10 days, additional days, after their public hearings. And so is, have we got any information on how to do that?
So if I may, Chair?
You, you can. Go ahead.
Thank you. To the second point, include that in the letter that you send, and then we can formally ask Dr. Taylor for a comment on that. I remember she said last meeting that she was gonna consult with Legal about the extension. So I'm not quite sure on that. And with the ad hoc, this is just an open request to my colleagues. I know a lot of people are committed. We're looking for a vice chair to be able to formally submit that. So if you have additional time to those listening, to those present, to show interest in that, then it's still in motion. So hopefully by the 25th, we'll have an update on what the ad hoc flow will look like. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You want to add something else?
I was just gonna say, thank you.
Oh, you're quite welcome. And, well, I guess one thing I'd like to, I guess, you know, there are a number of questions, and I'm not sure myself if we are operating solely under Tennessee Environment and Conservation, public meeting rules. But we do have federal assistance here. So we need to make sure, check with Legal to understand if we're operating also, or in conjunction. Feds override state anyway, but, you know, are those the rules that we're operating under? In fact, we do have some environmental organizations here that have lawyers, and I'm sure that they're very, very versed on, you know, those rules surrounding environmental justice and so forth. We might need to check with them, because we need some independence, something outside of the government to advise legally, pro bono, if you will. It's just to make sure, just to make sure. That's all. Okay. I'm just, you know, I'm looking at you, but I'm really talking to myself. Senior citizens do that. Okay, so you asked about, there was an ad hoc committee, Commissioner Thornton. I didn't know about that.
There's a request that's going into the Chairman to be able to form an ad hoc, to be able to follow up with the legislative priorities that Dr. Taylor referenced, with it being outdated. So she has chimed in on what her suggested amendments are, and we just wanted to open it up to the advocates to be able to chime in on what else they would want to do in terms of reform.
Okay, okay. Good deal. All right, Commissioner Ford?
My last, well, I don't have to do three comments anymore because the ad hoc was gonna be my first question. Number two, if there is another attempt to have a discussion, since Chair Whaley is the one that approves the entire agenda, I think that everybody in this room can agree that 10 minutes on this item is nowhere close to being accurate on how much time we would need discussion. Y'all took 15, which I appreciate and everything, but I'm just making the point saying, discussion 10 minutes? Oh, no. Not, not, not on this item, not of any important item. So I would recommend to Chair Whaley, if this does come back in this particular form, it needs to get the time that it deserves, because 10 minutes would not be enough. And what I don't want is the Chair of the Commission or others saying, well, we, we're, we're hit, I mean, we're behind and everything else. But I'm like, yeah, we're behind where you want us to be behind and all that other stuff. So I just wanted to put that out there. And then my last thing is, I don't know if the people, well, first of all, thank y'all for being here and staying with us. You got four of us up here out of 13, so make sure the other nine know that you were here and whatnot. Just, just don't let it be the four of us. The other nine need to hear it as well. But my last thing is, and I gotta go back to that flyer. And anybody in the Health Department, that format is not enough to qualify as a public meeting. Me going to a QR code on the internet or calling in to give my input is not enough. It may be enough to minimally satisfy something that you have to do yearly, but again, whatever forms are put in place, there's gonna be people that agree, disagree, this, that, and the other. I just want to make sure that the discussion is healthy. And Commissioner Thornton, through the Chair, my last comment. I hope that the ad hoc does give the same time that I'm asking about for the purposes of these things. But I will say at the end, there are deadlines, there are things that are moving. So if, and I'm paraphrasing Dr. Taylor, because she said that we have latitude to do particular things, but she's the director. Do not let the director or her boss off the hook. I'm gonna say that one more time. Do not let the director or her boss who hired her that could direct her to do A through G off the hook. Y'all, y'all don't let me off the hook for anything, so why you gonna let an appointed person and somebody else off the hook? And these are my constituents, so I can say that. But thank y'all again for enduring all of this. Hopefully, our communication will be a little bit better as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I leave, this is for the record. The Chair of Core City Neighborhoods and Housing contacted Mr. White with the Chamber, requesting assistance in contacting Brent Mayo on Saturday, April 5th, to appear before Core City Neighborhoods and Housing Standing Committee on April the 9th for a discussion item on XAI. Thank you so much. Y'all have a good day.
Okay, I'll like call to order Committee Number 17, Workforce Development. Please read Item Number 1 into the record.
Item 1 is an ordinance second reading, ordinance amending Article 4, Division 3, Section 2-231 of the Shelby County Code of Ordinances, creating a procurement initiative to incentivize apprenticeship programs for construction workers in Shelby County. Sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman. This item was amended in March 31st, 2025, Commission Meeting.
Thank you so much. This item has been moved by Commissioner Ford, seconded by me. I move to enter the substitute into the record.
Second.
Does, is the caption the same?
The caption is the same.
Okay.
Without objection? So moved. See if I have more committee to be on. I know.
Commissioners or?
Okay, so thank you so.
Director, could they explain the differences between?
Yes, we're gonna do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, so again, thank you, Director Wilbon, for coming in. And I would like the Attorney to explain the difference. And then I would like for Chef Wilbon to explain the program altogether. So I believe in, in the Commission meeting last week, I think it was out of order because they had people commenting before you would have explained the whole program to the Commission. So I would like to think this is time to be in an orderly fashion. And I would, since I'm the Chair of this one committee, I would like it to be succinct. So again, Attorney Ingram, if you explain the difference. And then Administrator or Director Wilbon, if you could talk about the program itself. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Marcy Ingram, Legislative Counsel. The only difference is the paragraph that speaks to the duties for the Administrator of Purchasing has now been changed to speak to the duties of the Office of EOC, which include monitoring and implementing the implementation of the program as well as handling any complaints regarding noncompliance of the program.
And then before you begin, can you explain also why it was necessary to change it? I would think the audience needs to know that as well. And then if you wouldn't mind, just, you know, talk about the program itself.
Chef Wilbon, Administrator, Shelby County EOC Office. The reason for the change and the reason why the new language is there is because part of the responsibility will be to evaluate whether or not the vendors who seek to take advantage of the bid discount have legitimate workforce development programs or associated with legitimate workforce development programs. And then to obviously make an assessment of whether or not they qualify for the proposed bid discount in the ordinance. And so that's something that we in Shelby County EOC sort of do anyway. And so this falls more appropriately under our jurisdiction than it would purchasing. And so purchasing is in an agreement that is something that we ought to do. Obviously, it's less work for them, and we are willing to do that. So that's why this change was made, to have EOC administer the review of the workshop, workforce apprenticeship programs applicability, and also whether or not the vendor qualifies for participation under the bid preference section of this ordinance. Just to explain what the ordinance does. In a nutshell, this ordinance is to encourage greater participation in the construction industry. There is a need to increase the workforce in construction. Certainly, apprenticeship programs have been around for a long time. And this is an opportunity for the county to encourage contractors to be involved and to utilize the apprenticeship programs that exist at the federal, state, and local levels. So any of those approved programs at the federal, state, or local level makes you eligible to participate in our program if you're involved with them. And as such, the carrot is that if you are involved with those programs and you do hire apprentices, apprentices under that, then you qualify to be considered for a bid discount on projects that you would be seeking to qualify for under the county and become the bidder of record and to receive an award from. There is a tremendous need in this community for more people in the construction industry. This program is non-racial. It's race neutral. Anybody who has participation in a program qualifies for the bid discount. The bid discount is 5%. For those who are wondering what a bid discount is, it means that your bid for the purposes of evaluation is discounted by that amount, which brings down your price for consideration in terms of the bid. But your actual price remains the same as it was. It is just for the purposes of evaluation, you're entitled to this discount, which then would obviously make you lower, which would then hopefully give you a better standing to be qualified as the lowest and best bidder. This is a program that I think all segments of the community benefit from. It certainly is one that hopefully will encourage a number of our young people to get involved in the construction industry. It involves a pre-apprenticeship element to it, which is one that we'll be working with the schools to try to work out a program where young people can get exposed to construction and be involved in construction. They can't exactly be apprentices, because there are obviously laws governing how much they can work, how long they can work, and how they can be on the job site. But they certainly can get exposed to construction through a pre-apprenticeship program and perhaps then continue to apprenticeship positions. So with that, I will stop, and I'll answer any questions that might exist for me. I do want to thank Commissioner Sugarman for taking the initiative and bringing this forward and asking me to look into it. It's something that, from my position as EOC Administrator, I know helps us generate more participation in the construction industry. And hopefully, some of these folk who get into the apprenticeship program will continue in their journey to become laborers and then journeymen. And then at some point, perhaps even apply for the specialty trades and general construction licenses and start their own business. But there is a process, and this is certainly a way we hope to increase the number of construction businesses in this community of all races and sizes and types.
Thank you so much. I see Commissioner Thornton in the queue.
I just started a snack. Thank you, Chair. So first, I would like to be added as a sponsor.
May I continue?
Okay. Did you want to?
Oh, so, yes. Okay, so then moved by Commissioner Thor, I'm just so engaged, okay? Seconded by Commissioner Ford, okay? Without objection?
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you to the sponsor for bringing this. I think it's very thoughtful. So when Regional 1 was being discussed, I added a couple of stipulations. I think through legislative process, they put a timestamp on it that may have made it mute. But I'm curious to go conjure up that legislation to figure out where we are, because what I wanted Regional 1 to do was to be proactive, to figure out within MSCS how they can create inroads into the school system to prepare people for the health care fields. And so I don't know where that is, where those conversations are. But when I heard you say MSCS and the pre-apprenticeship, I'm wondering, what is the plan to be able to go into a formal arrangement with MSCS to figure out and study where there are opportunities for us to create actual pathways that stem from our K-12 system into these apprenticeship programs? So whether that be through CTE programming? I'm just curious, like, if this ordinance passes, what happens in terms of the pre-apprenticeship? Is that just on you to suggest to MSCS, or where are your conversations?
Well, I would like to address that, if I may, because in my conversation with the Superintendent, we did have a conversation. He's very supportive, and he did say he wants to expand the CTE program. Having said that, we are behind as far as the state, the number of CTE classes that we have. In fact, East Tennessee is way ahead of us. And so he does realize that we need expansion in the CTE program. He's very supportive of this. Having said, they also have, you know, I don't, you know, talk about Cogeville High School. You know, they already have, you know, construction programs, et cetera, et cetera. As well, as I talked to the Mayor of Millington, he's very excited. And he says, this is exactly what we need, because we do need skilled workers in the workforce. As you all know, that Shelby County is losing population. And so, and again, we have, people are asking, well, how can we bring more businesses? Well, one way is to have a skilled workforce. As we all know, we've read the news that as far as Memphis Shelby County Schools concerned, the level of proficiency as far as reading and numeracy and things, that measures 22% and holding. With a skilled workforce, I'm using up my time. I'll give you time back. But 30 more seconds on the clock for you, but I just want to say this real quickly. And so with that, with the, you know, the measuring and the math and all that, you know, with the pre-apprentices program, this may bring the young people back into the interest of academics and learning to hone in their math, numeracy, proficiency levels, and also their literacy levels as well. So hopefully, this will be a full circle as far as the pre-apprentices program is concerned. And please give Commissioner Thornton 30 more seconds back on the clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. To Legal, would it be possible to include, like, a requirement? You talked about forecasting in the past, and I just, I see these huge capital improvement projects. And I'm just curious, like, is it stipulated that they have to forecast that we could thoughtfully go about preparing these projects to have more local and minority qualified candidates that could participate? I think about the FedEx Forum. I think about, you know, the schools, the future jail that we're talking about, another billion-dollar project, Regional 1, a billion-dollar project. And when I see you say that we are short-staffed, it's like, that's not gonna auto-correct itself with these huge projects that we are positioning ourselves to fund. So just to Legal, are we able to, like, carve out that a particular scoped-out project would necessitate that you forecast your capacity for minority and local spend? Or is, I just, I don't want the ordinance just to sit in for it to not do the work that it's intended to do. So if, if there's any inclusions that could happen to this particular ordinance to make it more robust and to just specifically target those big capital projects? If you could just say that, then I would love that on the second reading.
Chef Wilbon, EOC Administrator, I am not legal, so I'll try to give you an opinion that is not a legal one. But the idea of the ordinance is it offers But the idea of the ordinance is it offers a nice carrot. 5% on your bid as a general contractor and 3% if you are a subcontractor. And if the general and the subcontractor are both participants in an apprenticeship program and has apprentices, then they would qualify for an 8% bid discount. It's a very significant encouragement. On many construction jobs, that's the difference between profit and loss. So, I mean, you're getting an encouragement. I don't know that we can make anybody do anything in terms of inclusion. But I do think that, A, the idea is that if you have this carrot and it's extended and you have an opportunity to help be the low bidder because of your participation in this program and the bid discount that you get, then certainly, I think you're going to see folk wanting to take advantage of that. Because I don't want you, if you're my competitor, to get an 8% bid discount or a 5% bid discount, and I don't get the same thing. Because now your price is definitely going to probably be lower than mine if you're getting it and I'm not. So I think that that's why it was structured this way. I don't know that we have the ability to require. But I do think if the carrot is significant enough, in this case, I think it is, that you will see people wanting to take advantage of this, and they will want to have apprentices. And the other thing I want to say about the apprentices is, as the ordinance says in its beginning, most of the people who get into these apprentice positions end up being hired full-time. And they end up in the category of somewhere around $70,000 a year. Now, for a person that doesn't have to get a college degree, that can basically go through these pre-apprenticeship programs and then apprenticeship program, it's not a bad salary. It's not a bad salary at all. So there's a win-win for everyone. There's a win-win in terms of if the person goes through the program and stays in it, more than likely, you prove to be valuable to the employer who hires you under the apprenticeship program because you've been performing duties and they know your work habits and know that you're capable of. And then it's a win-win for the employer, who is the vendor, who will get to take advantage of the 5% or 8% bid discount. So everybody has a win in this. If we can sort of convince those that are looking at this that this is something that helps all of us. And long-term, it does supply, resupply those workers that we're going to need for all of these massive projects that we're going to have coming up. Because it's going to have them included on them as they come up.
Commissioner Thornton, Marcy Ingram, Legislative Council. State law prohibits us from adding additional requirements to licensed contractors, such as those in the construction field. So it'd have to be a request.
Thank you, Attorney Ingram. Commissioner Ford?
I almost forgot my question because I know Commissioner Thornton, when she goes in, she goes in. Two things. One, I know that Mr. Nibley approached me regarding this ordinance, and I deferred to the initial sponsors. So I don't know if IBW has reached out to you. I know some of the things that Mr. Wilbon mentioned. I know were some of their questions. But I told them, look, Commissioner Sugarman's the sponsor. I don't see any adverse effect to IBW or anybody that would like to go out and get that work done. So that's number one. Number two, to the sponsor, you stated that you reached out to MSCS regarding this as well. You know, I got an acronym for MSCS, but I ain't going to say it right now. One of the S's, I can't say on, well, I could say on record, but I'd be out of order. But with that being said, don't laugh over there, Marcy, without your mask on, so nobody will know that you were laughing at what I said. But as far as this is concerned, I don't see any issues with this. I just wish we had more people that were in here besides four folks because I guarantee you're going to have all type of questions from members that are not here. And I just sincerely hope that, because this is a Sugarman, and now Sugarman Thornton ordinance, that people don't stall this because I see nothing but upside on this. So I'll just leave it there.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. And so, no, Nibley did not reach out to me, but I'm going to say this on the record. Once you have someone going through the program and they receive their license, whatever's HVAC or plumbing or what have you, that's going to increase their membership, the IBW membership, as well as the other memberships. And so if anything, I would think that they would embrace this. Because again, we have a lack of skilled workforce individuals in Shelby County. And that's a deterrent when companies are thinking about coming to Memphis Shelby County and building, et cetera. And so, Nibley, if you're listening, you know, my number is, you know, ring me up. Okay, next, we have Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you, Chair. So just in the train of thought with the labor unions, have we reached out to them for them to chime in on what it would look like for them to also support executing this ordinance? That's the first question. And then the second one is just, so this ordinance creates programming, correct?
No.
It does not. Does the programming already exist?
Right.
And the programming that exists is within county government or within the labor unions or MSCS? Where is this programming? And all of those are mentioned?
Shep Wilbon, ELC Administrator, send all of them. There are federal apprenticeship programs, state apprenticeship programs, local apprenticeship programs. Some of them are through advocacy or trade associations. ABC has one, as is mentioned, at Carrieville. IBW has one. And I talked to, I believe, with Mr. Nibley and told him that his program would be eligible, provided the vendors that are in his program were taking advantage of that and basically then applying over here.
Okay, so is there a consolidated list of all these different programs?
There is. And we were provided by the writer, the preparer of this ordinance, which happened to be Griffin and Strong, that we were told there were 120 apprenticeship programs in the Shelby County area that were federal, state, and local.
So can we get that list?
I will try to get it, too.
Okay. And so that will be helpful, which leads me just to how we create awareness about these programs. I was just talking to one of the Labor Council leaders last night, and he was just talking about, you know, the need to be able to increase outreach and just community understanding that these opportunities exist. And so I host a basketball tournament, and I'm bringing it back in the spring. And it was 151 18- to 35-year-olds, and many of which are unemployed or looking to transition. And so it just, it just seems like if there's 120 different programs and we have the populace here to be able to get people connected, then there's a missing gap there. So I'm just curious, like, what is the commitment of your office to be able to do the marketing and outreach to let people know about these 120 opportunities? Is that within your scope? And hopefully, if not, when you present that budget, I hope that you would increase it to be able to afford you the privilege to be able to do that. We don't have flat budgets in ELC. I just don't believe in that. So all that to say, the programming, 120, if you could get that to us. Just putting labor unions and these other 120 programs on notice that we're looking to support and increase your enrollment in these programs. And then, I guess my last point is just around forecasting. If you could just talk about where are we in forecasting here in Shelby County? Are there any barriers that we are facing? And how well are we doing that presently?
Shep Wilbon, ELC Administrator. Forecasting has been a hit and a miss for us in ELC. There are some who have supplied us with what projects they will have. There are others who have not. According to the MWBE ordinance, 30 days after the budget has been approved, every department of Shelby County Government is supposed to supply us with their purchases in that fiscal year so that we can begin to see when those purchases would be made and we can begin to do some forecasting with those vendors that might be eligible for that process. We certainly also will be doing likewise with some of the LOSB stuff as well, shelter market perhaps as well. But we have not had the cooperation. And at the beginning of this fiscal year, I asked, when he became the chairman, the chairman sent it out. I know he sent out something, and we still didn't get a whole lot of response back from the departments about this spend. Again, we ask, and all we can do is try to make sure we get. But we did not get what we would have liked to have gotten. Now, of course, there is the idea that the capital improvement budget, which is primarily the construction budget and long-term items with long life, is there for us to see. And so we can then contact the departments about those projects when they see them specifically coming up and how. But to answer your question, one of our commitments for this fiscal year is to send out notice to everyone, all the departments, that according to the MWBE ordinance, and as I said, to some agree, the LOSB ordinance, you owe us a forecast of all the projects that you are going to be performing in this coming year within 30 days of that budget passing.
If I may, Chair, just a point of information from the legal. Are we able to require the forecasting submitted by the departments as a commission?
Marcy Ingram, Legislative Council. I would have to take a look at the other ordinances. I believe some of them speak to forecasting. I can't remember if it's a request or a requirement.
Okay. If you could give us a legal opinion, that would be helpful for some legislation I'm thinking through. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other commissioners in the queue, let's take this item down for a vote. Thank you. May we have a tally?
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Ford, and Thornton. We have three eye votes.
Thank you. This item goes down the favor of recommendation. And this concludes committee, my only committee. Yay, committee. I may see you two more times. But you said you wanted on record that you didn't care for me to have one. I didn't say that on record, okay? But anyway, this concludes my committee, number 17. Okay, so I'm going to open up. Yay, committee number three, hospitals and health.
Madam Chair, real quick question. Do anybody, do any of the commissioners need to ask questions on all three? Because I was going to ask if we could possibly read all three in at one time. But if Commissioner Thornton, she looking at me, was looking at me. If she got questions on all three, I'll leave it alone.
I just would want to, I mean, if we read them all, we still couldn't discuss them all?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. To the acting chair, could we possibly read the three items at once and do one vote? Commissioner Thornton stated that we can still ask the questions and still do the vote. Be able to help out a little bit with the time that we're already over.
That sounds like a wonderful, dear Commissioner Ford. So, parliamentarian, please read items one, two, and three into the record.
Item number one, resolution approving a three-year computer equipment warranty with LowDucks NA LLC with an annual cost of $20,333 for a total contract amount not to exceed $60,999. Warranty is for the provision of LowDucks imaging machine for imaging equipment located at the West Tennessee Regional Forensic Center for the Office of the Shelby County Medical Examiner. Warranty is for the period beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028. This item requires the expenditure of FY25 general funds for an annual contract amount not to exceed $20,333 for year one, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs. Item two, resolution amending the FY2025 Shelby County Health Department Position Control Budget to split position number 230252, 50% from general fund and 50% from grant fund per the grantor beginning September 1, 2024, through August 30, 2025. This item requires the appropriation and expenditure of FY2025 grant in general funds in an amount not to exceed $33,522.50, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs. Item three, resolution approving a three-year computer software warranty in IQ WebX PACS with an annual cost of $5,430 for a total contract amount not to exceed $16,290. The warranty is for the provision of PACS software support for imaging equipment located at the West Tennessee Regional Forensic Center for the Office of Shelby County Medical Examiner. Software warranty is for the period beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028. This item requires the expenditure of FY2025 general funds for an annual contract not to exceed $5,430 for year one, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs.
Thank you. This item has been moved by myself and seconded by Commissioner Ford. Seeing no commissioners in the queue, let's take this item down for a vote. These items down for a vote. Okay, all commissioners who want to vote, please cast your vote now or forever hold your peace. Can we have a tally?
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman and Ford. We have two eye votes.
These items go down the favor of recommendation. Parliamentarian, we have an add-on. Please read the add-on into the record.
Yes, Madam Chair.
So move it. Yeah.
Item four, resolution amending the FY2025 Shelby County Health Department Grant Fund operating budget in the amount of $411,000 for the period beginning August 1, 2024, through July 31, 2025, for the purpose of improving the monitoring of carbon monoxide in Shelby County. This item requires the appropriation and expenditure of FY2025 grant funds in an amount not to exceed $411,000, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs.
Thank you. This item has been moved by Commissioner Ford and seconded by me. Okay, we, pardon. Okay, and so, thank you. And so we do have a speaker or speakers. Please state your name and position for the record.
Good afternoon. Casey Smith Alexander, Deputy Director, Shelby County Health Department. The Shelby County Health Department has received funding and approval by the United States Environmental Protection Agency to install an air monitoring station located in South Memphis to provide 24/7, real-time, excuse me, reporting of air quality concentration. Some of the expected outcomes with the addition of this station include increased disadvantaged communities' monitored air quality, provide additional information regarding air quality in previously unmonitored area, and provide data regarding air quality in this community. This proposed air station will be located in the 38109 zip code. Thank you.
Thank you. And so I have a couple of questions real quickly. Because I see the grants coming from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, is that correct?
Casey Smith Alexander, that is correct.
Okay, my concern is with, at the federal level, there's a lot of concern about the Department of Energy, oh, actually, Protection Agency, EPA, being defunded. And I was just wondering, as far as these funds go, have you all thought about where they will come if they're not provided by at the federal level? Is there money at the state level? What would that look like? The second question is, as far as the EPA is concerned, with the lax of regulations and things like that, are we going to change locally any of our regulations? Thank you.
Sure. Casey Smith Alexander. The reason that it took us a minute, as you recall, in January with the new administration, they froze the funds. We were supposed to have had them then. As you see, this grant ends in a couple of months. So therefore... So therefore, we are drawing down the entire amount and moving very quickly to make sure that this station is built and done. So that is why the haste to hurry up and have this done, so that we can go ahead and ensure that we have an air monitoring station. To the second part of your question, as far as the ordinance is concerned, we would like to see changes made, especially to the zoning part of the ordinance. Um, as far as EPA and what their new regulations are gonna be, we have seen they are reducing and slicing and eliminating a lot of the Clean Air Act at this point in time. So I don't know what that will look like a week from now. It sounded like there's even a year from now. Um, we're just being mindful and watching the events unfold.
And with that said, I would just like to state on record that with, um, all these different, um, XAI and all these other, um, different organi- uh, entities coming into our area and with potential of pollutants, I hope that we tighten up as opposed to loosen up our regulations, okay? Thank you so much for that. Uh, Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. So, um, in the worst-case scenario, if at the federal level, um, things are just obliterated, what recourse, Attorney Ingram, do we have locally to set our own standard?
Marcy Ingram, Legislative Council, can you repeat the question?
So if, if federal, um, disbands or, um, I don't know what type of actions are happening. I'm assuming like just getting rid of whole offices is the sweep. So if, um, the governance at the federal level is removed here locally, would we be able to set our own standards when it comes to, um, monitoring our air quality?
Marcy Ingram, Legislative Council, so far as they don't, so long as they do not contradict any state law, you would be able to do so.
Okay, um, and it's my understanding that the state law, the federal law sets a low threshold. Um, so we're able to, well, I guess this will come up in the ad hoc. Y'all are invited preemptively. Um, but I'm just curious about this, this tension between local and state and what we're trying to do. So you said three-eight-one-oh-nine is the zip code. Um, when you say build a, a station, like, I don't know, a police precinct comes to mind, what does that look like? And is the grant funding that you have allocated sufficient to be able to build out an entire station?
Casey Smith Alexander, Deputy Director, to answer your question, yes. So I, I will invite all of you to actually come and see one of our air monitoring stations. One of these days, they are remarkable. So it looks like basically, if you can imagine, a larger shed, I'll say it like that. One of those sheds you put in your backyard, you can buy from Costco, Sam's. Um, we do have to have it custom-built. It is on a slab of concrete. It is usually, uh, connected to a utility pole, an actual pole, just in case we don't lose electricity and we're drawing straight from that. Um, it takes a couple of months mainly, because, one, we have to let the concrete dry totally, and in Memphis, all the rain. So I know when we've had the last one built, that was the, the main thing that took most time. After that is done, then the electricity, getting that done and vaulted and all of that takes a little bit, and then everything else is done. It's like you're putting in a module shed, the equipment will already be purchased. We have already received quotes from contractors to just make sure that we are good to go once this is voted upon and approved, because our time is so tight. So we have already done that. It's just a matter of, if you guys approve this, um, that we can go ahead and send it out to purchase all the items we need to.
Thank you for that. And the information that we get from the monitor, where, where does that go? What is the, the protocol for how, I don't know, if it picks up on, um, dangerous emissions? Like, what, what could happen from the monitoring as it's collected?
So we have a staff that monitors just air monitoring stations throughout Shelby County. Currently, we have five air monitoring stations. The way that it works is, of course, everything is electronic. We receive alerts from the building, basically letting us know if it's lost power, if for some reason it's no longer collecting the data, if we have to change filters or anything like that. All of that is monitored electronically. Staff does go out to the facility to inspect, make sure everything is running, making sure that there's no issues with the filtering or the instrument equipment that's actually collecting the information. So if it is for some reason a high day, for whatever reason, that the pollutant is high, we do have that right to say, hey, high pollutant in that area due to X, Y, and Z.
But not, it's not mandated that you report to the public if there's a high pollutant found?
Normally, for ozone days, we do do that. If it's a high pollutant found in the air quality, we would be obligated, I'm gonna say that, to let everyone know what is occurring. Currently at the air monitoring station, you, at the five we have, we do have days um, where sometimes it is high. We do have one that's located near the interstate. If there's a bad accident or anything like that, we do expect for it to go up a bit as far as numbers are indicated.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Thor- uh, Thornton. I just wanna say for the record, I did allow this add-on, okay? No problem. Just so you know that, you know, there's no pushback from this commissioner. Okay, Commissioner Ford, you have the floor.
Thank you. Very quickly, uh, I know you mentioned three-eight-one-oh-nine, but will this facility also facilitate other bordering, uh, zips such as one-one-six, one-oh-six? I know it's gonna be located in one-oh-nine, but what other zip codes will it facilitate?
Well, it will be monitoring everything that is around it, in the proximity of it. As far as the modeling aspect of it, I will have to get that to you to let you know how far it would extend into those neighboring zip codes. I don't have that information right now in front of me.
So you don't have the radius or anything like that?
Not right now in front of me. I do not.
Because I'm, if you can get that for Monday, I wanna add that. Uh, I just wanna do two things real quick. I wanna add one whereas clause, and I do have it in writing. So whoever needs it, there you go. So I like to add, I like to make one, well, yeah, one amendment. After the second whereas clause, because we had a lot of people that were here, and they are, they are asking us to implement initiatives regarding this, um, very important topic. I'd like to amend the resolution for a third whereas clause that would say whereas the South Memphis community has desired for Shelby County government to implement initiatives and legislation that tackle the array of environmental issues that have existed affecting those neighborhoods for generations, semicolon, and.
Second, okay, so moved.
A comma, semicolon, no.
Without objection?
So, so, so Parliamentarian is saying that I need to also say, uh, with this amendment, whatever to be a further resolve needs to, uh, match this.
Correct.
Some of it.
Second, without objection, so moved.
And I'd like to be moved to add, be added as a sponsor, because I remember, uh, this issue. And one of my questions was gonna be, is this the drawdown? And you just said it's yes. So since I've been working on this, I'd like to be at that sponsor.
Second, so this, you've been added as a sponsor. Uh, you moved, I second, without objection, so moved. Okay, let's take this item down for a vote. Can we have a tally?
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Ford, and Thornton. We have three eye votes.
Thank you. This item goes down with favorable recommendation, and this concludes committee number three, hospitals and health.
Thank you. We now will convene committee sixteen, Milton Community Enhancement Grants. Um, so that we can figure out what we're working with, is there anyone here to speak on any item within the Milton Enhancement Grants? Deputy, you wanna, you wanna speak on an item? Okay, um, seeing none, Madam Parliamentarian, can you read items one through fifteen?
Yes, ma'am. Item one is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of ten thousand dollars to the city of Germantown, a governmental entity. This item requires an expenditure of ten thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item two is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to Maine Up Memphis, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of two thousand five hundred dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bivs. Item three is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of five thousand dollars to New Day Children's Theater, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of five thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item four is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of five thousand dollars to Memphis Child's Advocacy Center, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of five thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Mikel Lowry. Item five is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of five thousand dollars to Collierville Arts Council, Inc., a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of five thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item six is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to Collierville Citizens Police Association, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of fifteen thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item seven is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of ten thousand dollars to Ballet Memphis, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of ten thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Shante K. Avant. Item eight is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of ten thousand dollars to Page Robbins Adult Daycare, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of ten thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Shante K. Avant and Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item nine is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of five thousand dollars to South Side Wildcats Organization, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of five thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Brittany Thornton. Item ten is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of ten thousand dollars to Bevo Boys Fitness Academy, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of ten thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bivs. Item eleven is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to the town of Collierville Fire Department, a governmental entity. This item requires an expenditure of fifteen thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item twelve is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars to Lemoine Owen College Community Development Corporation, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of seven thousand five hundred dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Shante K. Avant. Item thirteen is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of five thousand dollars to Telugu Association of Memphis, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of five thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item fourteen is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars to the town of Collierville, a governmental entity. This item requires an expenditure of seven thousand five hundred dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item fifteen is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to Neighborhood Christian Centers, Inc., a charitable organization. This item requires expenditure of two thousand five hundred dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Mikel Lowry.
Great job. I'm still trying to chew. This item has been moved by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Ford. So, um, seeing no discussion, um, if we could prepare the screen for voting, Madam Clerk. All commissioners seeking to vote, having cast their vote, if you could close the screen and report the tally.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Mills and Thornton. We have two eye votes.
This item goes down with favorable recommendation. And now concludes committee sixteen and our committee for today. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in.